Ten, nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three.
Good morning Chairman, Madam Vice Chairman and Commissioners and welcome to the Wednesday, June 2nd, 2021 Board of County Commission Meeting. I'm Akeem Ashford, the Director of Communications. Today I'd like to share with you two health and hazardous waste events. The first one's going to be at Textron Beach Craft. That's going to be Saturday, June 5th from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 a.m. Please bring the following items: paint, batteries, motor oil. Items not to bring: tires, drums, electronics, televisions, and others. The second event is actually going to be June 19th. That one's going to be at Spirit Aero Systems from 9:00 a.m. until 1:00 p.m. Like the previous one, household hazardous waste materials only. Next, we're really excited to welcome Dr. Etling from the Cedric County Zoo. The Cedric County Zoo is celebrating its 50th birthday this year. The zoo held a ribbon cutting and press conference on May 27th to celebrate the great opening of its new entrance complex and announced some big changes to the zoo. Before we welcome Dr. Etling here to speak, we would like to show you a quick video highlighting that announcement.
Well, thank you.
Well, good morning Commissioners.
I thought maybe the first part of that, we were seeing the water treatment plant being constructed, but it was your deal. Anyway, Doctor, thanks for being here.
Yeah, well, thanks for having me.
Absolutely.
What you just witnessed was kind of a year and a half culmination of construction, which as I like to say, our front entry finally caught up with the rest of our beautiful zoo. So, I mean, the 500,000-plus people that we attract annually will be able to get through our new 80-foot expansive gates in a very expeditious way now. So, in fact, I've been watching it all out the window the last three or four days. I mean, they're just coming in lickety-split now. So, it does put a new face on the zoo for the next 50 years. It's kind of interesting when you think about our old administration building was a small plastics manufacturing company when the property was purchased in the late 60s and was meant to be temporary. So, the fact that we lived in the temporary building for 50 years, I think we've made good choices with this new front entry that will set us up for the next 50. As I like to say, I want everybody that follows us to be in a good place too. So, I think we've got plenty of room for growth on the second floor. We've put a lot of green features into this building in terms of bird-safe glass and solar, and we're now on 100% wind energy for the zoo. So, we've got a lot of things to be proud of, you know, that keeps us the number-one tourist attraction in the state of Kansas and one of the finest zoos in the country. There's no doubt about that. So, with that, just kind of the kickoff for a great year ahead. We have Zubal Ebec on September 11th, which I know everybody's excited about. We'll follow that on October 1st with the opening of the Slosson Family Asian Big Cat Track. And that evening, we will kick off Wild Lights, which will be the first time we've ever hosted a Chinese Lantern Festival here, which I think will be very, very exciting for the community. The company that we're working with, Tianyu, based out of Chicago, said they have never had one in this part of the country. So, I think that it'll be very, very popular and we'll probably have it back in the future. And then, to continue the celebration, next year, we'll kick off Stingrays in April, early April, and that'll run all the way through October, and that'll be here for five years. We know that there's a real desire for more aquatic exhibits in this landlocked part of the country. So, I think we've answered that call with the Stingrays. There'll be some sharks in there as well. And then Memorial Day weekend next year, we will start our new Martha C. Buford Safari Express, which I think, you know, everyone's been longing for a train here, and it's manufactured right here in Wichita, Kansas, a chance ride. So, we're excited about that. We're going to start working on the design here in the next couple of weeks. We're hoping maybe we'll have the longest track in the country. I know that we're close in our initial designs. We may just tweak that just to make it the longest track in the country. So, stay tuned. I don't want to take too much more of your time this morning, but I just wanted to thank you for your continued support of our great zoo.
Thank you, Doctor. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Dr. Etling, thank you very much for being here today. One thing we missed a year and a half ago was the groundbreaking. As you remember, why the weather just wasn't conducive to us being able to do a groundbreaking. So, it's fantastic that a year and a half later, we were able to do the ribbon cutting. But what happened over the last 50 years wouldn't have happened without a great staff, and you have a fantastic staff. Without the great leadership of you and all of your folks have with our zoo, without the board that you have that can get the funding together to produce something like this entrance and also the Stingray exhibit, the train, and everything else, and especially the support of our community. So, all those things came together in what we just saw in this video. It's a testament to a lot of people's hard work over the last 50 years, and I sincerely appreciate what you and everyone has done to make the zoo a success. Thank you.
You bet. Commissioner Cruz.
You're not going to miss the HVAC in the bathroom?
No, no.
Yeah, when my daughters and I walked by and saw it demoed, they were very sad, I must say. But I'm so excited for this, and I'm excited for you guys. That's going to be, I haven't seen it yet, so I'm excited to take my daughters. What a great first impression that we have now developed for our zoo. So, congrats.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Well, I was there when we did the ribbon cutting, and just gorgeous. I mean, it's unbelievable how nice that is, and I love the solar and the windows that the birds, you know, won't fly through. All of it is just the thought that you and your staff and your board have put into this is just unbelievable. I would say though, now as a parent, instead of scheduling 20 minutes at the end to go through your gift shop, we're going to have to do like 30 or 45 because it's so much bigger and there's just so much stuff to look at. So, my kids will very much enjoy that. I'll just have to schedule a little bit longer at the end of all of our trips. But thank you so much for everything that you do and bring to our community.
Thank you.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to say I'm very proud of you and the board for getting this done. It's, I use the word curb appeal. We have the best curb appeal of any zoo, I think, in the world at this point. And looking backwards, I didn't realize how embarrassing what we had before, how bad it was, but clearly it was needing to be upgraded. And when we went out there and enjoyed the celebration the other day, it exceeded all my expectations. It was beautiful, and it's wonderful. So, you guys did a tremendous job. I want to say thank you specifically. I know you're doing a tremendous job as the leader of this organization. My grandkids were there at the zoo yesterday and had a wonderful time, came home, and they were just nonstop talking about what they saw. And this is a great opportunity for our kids and even our grandkids and our families for Sedgwick County. So, I just want to say I love what our zoo provides to our community, and I know that you're the common denominator that makes everything happen out there. So, thank you for all your work and appreciate especially this tremendous milestone for our meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, obviously, I'm sorry that I was not able to make the deal. I was called for a personal item out of town, but I know it was success, and I think you can assure your staff and your board that it looks like, I know a few years ago, there was some turmoil about how the county commission felt about the zoo and everything overall, but it looks to me like five people here are in full support of the future of the zoo, and I'm glad that it's that way. So, please know that, and thank the board, and thank your staff on our behalf for this great asset for our community. So, thank you.
Will do. Thank you. You have a great day.
All right.
Okay, Commissioners, looking at a quick rundown of the agenda for today. Commissioners, under appointments, you will approve several resignations and appointments to various boards. Under new business, there is a county zone change of a single-family residential property. The description for this property is generally located within 975 feet east of South 167th Street West and within one-half mile south of West 4th Street. This zoning case is in District 3. Staying in District 3, you will hear a conditional use to allow camper and boat storage on property-zoned rural residential in Goddard. There will be a review of a service plan for the city of Derby unilateral annexation. You will consider the Prairie Lakes Redevelopment District tax increment financing. This project is in District 4. There will also be a report of the bids and contracts from their May 27th meeting. With that, Chairman, turn the meeting over to you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Akeem. And with that, we will officially call the meeting of Wednesday, June 2nd, to order. So, Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Invitation to be observed by a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
We'll call Commissioner Lopez.
Present.
Commissioner Dennis.
Present.
Commissioner Howell.
Present.
Commissioner Cruz.
Present.
Chairman Meitzner.
Present. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we received one public comment email-wise. It's from a current county employee, but we did receive one. So, is there any comments about or any questions? Being none, I move that we accept the email public comments that we received.
Second.
Motion is second. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. And then on the public agenda for people in attendance, we do not have anybody, they want to speak on a later item. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we do not have anybody else from the public here to address us at this time. I don't see any, so we will move on. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Consideration of minutes. Item A, regular meeting minutes of May 12th, 2021.
Commissioners, as we've done in the past, if it's all right with you all, I would like to motion that we combine item A and B, which is the minutes of May 12th and May 19th, as one motion. I'll make that motion.
Second.
There's a motion is second. Any questions or additions? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item C, accept the resignation of Mark Orr from the Cedric County Community Corrections Advisory Board and a Board of County Commission at-large position, which has traditionally been for the chief public defender.
Okay, Mr. Papun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mike Papun, County Counselor. First item today is the resignation of Mr. Orr from the Community Corrections Advisory Board, as was stated by Clerk. We no longer, this person no longer is the chief public defender and has some other scheduling conflicts, and this is an appointment that traditionally has been a commission appointment in this position as the chief public defender. So, please accept Mr. Orr's resignation.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Orr, for your service, and I will make a motion to accept the resignation of Mark Orr.
Second.
There's a motion is second. Any other questions, comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item D, resolution appointing Deidre Manus to the Cedric County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board.
Mr. Papun.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Items D and E can be taken together if it's the will of the board. Both of these appointments are by Commissioner Lopez. They're new appointments to the Cedric County Intellectual and Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board. This board develops plans and gives advice to our intellectual and developmental programs. Commissioner Lopez is recommending that Deidre Manus be appointed and also Cassandra Sines. Both of these resolutions are in proper form, and we'd ask you to approve the resolutions.
Okay. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Well, I would just want to make both individuals who want to be on this board, because very important, and they both are very. Your microphone, turn your phone off. I knew that would happen one of these days. Thank you. Well, I was just thinking, the two women that want to be on this board, this is extremely important, and I know they're both very passionate about this. So, I will make a motion that we approve both resolutions.
Second.
There's a motion is second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Item F, resolution reappointing Brian Powers to the Wichita-Cedric County Access Advisory Board.
Okay, Mr. Papun.
Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Dennis's reappointment of Brian Powers to the Wichita-Cedric County Access Advisory Board. This is a joint board we have with the city of Wichita. Each county commissioner has one appointment on this board, and it's Mr. Commissioner Dennis's recommendation to reappoint Brian Powers. The resolution's in proper form, and I ask that you approve the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, Brian has been serving in this position in the past, doing a great job. I appreciate his continued service. I make a motion that we reappoint Brian Powers.
I'll second, or she's second. Any other questions or comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Next item, please.
Item G, resolution reappointing Alora Forshi to the Cedric County Grievance Board in the alternate department head position.
Mr. Papun.
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papun, County Counselor. There was some confusion on this item, and it's in your backup. This item is referred to as being, this board being derived from Resolution Number 236-1976, the resolution that predates even me, which is hard to find around here. In fact, and Commissioner Howell brought this to my attention this morning, in reviewing this resolution, this resolution is outdated. This resolution actually called for a five-member grievance board, and I know for a fact, this has been a three-member board for as long as I can remember. I've been in contact with Sheena Smuts, the HR Director, and I believe in 1988, through Sedgwick County Personnel Policies, we revised this and created a three-member board, which is what you see in your backup. We've had that for quite some time, and these appointments that are there have been, the county's appointments anyway, for the department head and the elected official have been the same for quite some time. We have, Alora was the alternate position for the department head, and I believe the regular appointment department head has been Susan Erlinwine for some time. Alora's been the backup. The elected officials appointed to the board is Kelly Arnold is the primary chair of the board, and the backup alternate is Tanya Buckingham for the elected officials. And then, the classified employees are appointed by, are recommended through HR through a process they have of getting employee input for this board. Again, these appointments have been here for quite some time, but it isn't in accordance with the resolution that was referenced in your backup. It is through county policy. I know Commissioner Howell has asked some questions of me of why was this change made? When was it made and that sort of thing? And I don't have the exact answers to that question at this point. We can get those. I don't know that there's any hurry for this appointment, and we can come back at another time with this appointment. But the county manager makes, through county policy, the county manager recommends the appointment of the department head for the county commission to approve. But the major change from 1976 to when we probably revised this in 1988 is the fact that we did it through county policy as opposed to an original home rule resolution. So, be happy to answer any other questions you might have.
Okay. So, the real question is, but I see the resolution makes reference to three members that we would be approving today along with.
Yeah, the resolution I prepared, appointing Alora, would be the three-member, it's a three-member board.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to say it upfront, I think Laura's tremendous, and I think that I have highest regards for her. This has nothing to do with the names on this resolution, and I think Susan is one of my favorite people in Sedgwick County, so it's nothing about her either. I am curious about, I'm reading the 1976 resolution, and it was changed for some reason. I'd like to go back and read the minutes as to why this was changed. Back in 1976, there was five members on this board. There was one elected official appointed by the county commissioners and a department head appointed by the county commissioners, and two non-supervisory county employees appointed by the county commissioners. I'm missing someone here. Anyway, I guess my point is, I understand the makeup here is a little bit different than what we have today, and I don't know why it was changed. I'd like to go back and read the minutes as to why that change was made and when that was changed. And I just communicated with Kelly Arnold this morning regarding that he is the chair of the three-member board. They haven't met in years. So, it's not like there's an, I don't think there's an urgency to this that I'm aware of, but I guess I'd like to understand this board a little bit more deeply and understand exactly what their role is and the makeup of this board, and maybe go back and understand exactly how this came to be. But with that in mind, I would like to maybe not move forward with an appointment today. I'd like to give ourselves just a little bit of time to understand this more deeply. I never did get a briefing on this, for example, and I don't really have the documents in front of me to know exactly what we're dealing with right now. So, I'd like to see us make, I'd like to make a motion to defer this until the time that we have the rest of the information, we bring it back when we have the details understood more deeply. So, I'd like to make a motion to defer.
A question, can we still approve this so business could go on in case they have to meet, and then we can come back and correct, when we redo all the research and correct it later? Or?
Well, we could always do that, Mr. Chairman, but as Commissioner Howell stated, this board hasn't, I don't think, hasn't had a grievance in three years. I don't think there's any pressing grievance right now. This information will be very easy for us to dig up and get to the board to see why and when the change was made. Again, my guess is it was made in 1988 when we adopted new personnel policies, and I can get each one of you a copy of Cedric County. It's 4.502 is the policy that at some point changed it to a three-member board, and it's still county commission, as the original resolution stated, it's still, a board's still appointed by the county commission. It's just how, who nominates those appointments, and at some point, it was made explicit that the county manager would nominate two department heads to be the regular member and the alternate member. So, it's whatever the will of the board is, but this will be easy information to get to the board.
All right. So, if we delay this, this is in no way a criticism or a question of Susan Erlin and Alora's credibility to be on this board?
No, absolutely not. My understanding is there's no pressing matters before this board and hasn't been for some time, so we can get that information from them.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. I'm interested to know the current appointees, how long, when were they appointed, and how long is their term?
Okay. There's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis, second. All right. Madam Clerk, any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Okay, motion carries for a delay, so Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item H, resolution reappointing Charles Mark Clark as county appraiser for Sedgwick County.
Microphone, please.
Mr. Chairman, pursuant to Kansas statute, you're required by July 1 of 2021, it's a four-year, every four years, you're a four-year, every four years you're required by statute to appoint a county appraiser. If you remember, after a fairly extensive search for a county appraiser upon the resignation of Mr. Borchard several years ago, a couple of years ago, Mark Clark was appointed to fill the unexpired term of Mr. Borchard. The resolution you have before you today conforms with Kansas statute and would appoint Mr. Clark for a four-year term beginning July 1, 2021, and ending June 30, 2025. So, Mr. Clark meets and exceeds all the requirements by statute. It's the recommendation to approve the resolution of Mr. Clark as the county appraiser for the next four years.
Okay. Thank you. I know it's been quite a journey, and I see Mr. Clark is here. Thank you for the patience and your working through to get all the licensing and all the things that we needed to accomplish, and so I'm glad and proud to make a motion to appoint Mark Clark as our county appraisal for Cedric County.
Second.
There's a second. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner.
Aye. Mark, congratulations. Do you want to say anything on your appointment?
Mark Clark, county appraiser. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you very much. I appreciate the reappointment, and I look forward to working with you and serving citizens of Cedric County for the next four years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business. Item I, ZON 2021-00012, county zone change from RR Rural Residential to SF20 Single Family Residential on property generally located within 175 feet east of South 167th Street West and within one-half mile south of West Fourth Street, 16011 West Shade Street.
Okay. Good morning, Scott Wadel. Welcome to the commission meeting.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. I'm going to wait for the PowerPoint to get fired up here.
Okay. You want, Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you. Before you start, I want to declare that I have had ex parte contact on this case, and I have not made a final decision.
Thank you. And I believe I received an email on this as well for ex parte contact, but I have not made any decisions. Commissioner Lopez?
And I'm the same. I've received some mail, and I have not made my decision yet. Thank you.
I have also received some contact via mail, and I have, I'm keeping an open mind, I've not made my decision yet.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. My, I don't know if I received anything on this other than staff briefing, so I may be wrong, but I may have missed something, but of course, I've received anything so far.
Okay. All right. Back to you, Mr. Wadel.
All right. Thank you very much. So, this zone case is a request for a zone change from rural residential to SF20 single family. The property, the subject site is located southwest, southeast of the intersection of Fourth Street and 167th Street. It is 64.05 acres in size. In terms of the context, property to the north is zone rural residential and in agricultural use. Properties to the east are zone rural residential and in use as large lot residential. Properties to the south and east are in the city of Wichita and zoned SF5. You can see them here in white on the map, and partially developed with single-family homes. Properties to the south and to the west are zoned rural residential and in use for agricultural use and large lot residential. Properties to the west are zoned rural residential and in use as a mix of single-family residences, manufactured homes, and agricultural land, which you can see on the aerial here. In terms of the history on this case, on April 22, the public hearing for this item was held at the planning commission. They voted to recommend approval of the rezoning. And please note that during the MAPC meeting, the following events occurred. The planning staff member presenting the case mistakenly indicated that no comments were submitted. In fact, multiple emails had been submitted to the planning department. They have been included in your packet as attachments to the staff report. The comments were also later shared with the planning commission, so I want to acknowledge that that occurred. Second note is that, in addition, during the planning commission meeting and at the start of the next item, so following the conclusion of this item and action taken by the MAPC, remote meeting participants indicated that they wished to speak on this particular case. The MAPC had already taken action on the item, and a motion was made to suspend their previous action, then hear the public comments. That motion failed, and the meeting proceeded without the public comments being heard. So, we had those two things that happened. On May 3, the District 3 Citizen Advisory Board considered the case and voted eight to one to recommend denial. No protest petitions were submitted in opposition to the application. The recommended action is to adopt the findings of the MAPC, to approve the rezoning and authorize the necessary signatures. The alternatives are to deny the application by making alternative findings and overriding the MAPC, which would require four out of five votes. You can return the case to the MAPC with a statement specifying the basis for failure to approve or deny the application. This requires a simple majority, or three of five votes. And I'll take you through some of the pictures and graphics. So, here's the aerial showing the site. Here's the zoning showing rural residential primarily, except for the area in Wichita to the south and east. Here's the map, the future growth concept map from the comprehensive plan. Here's photos looking at the site from the west. Photos looking at the site from the northeast of the site. This is of the home that's currently on the property. And again, looking towards the site. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Is there any questions at this time? I don't see any from the commission, since this is a new item, a zoning case. We'll now open the room for public comment. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to speak on this item? If so, please address the commission, state your name, and try to, we try to hold this to about five minutes unless it gets a lot of questions.
Good morning, Commission. I'm Dan Garber with Garber Surveying Service at 544 West Douglas in Wichita. We submitted the first sketch plan for this subdivision back in January of 2020, and we had designed it with 20 lots in the subdivision. We were told there might be a challenge to this because it wasn't dense enough, and so we submitted just a sketch plan to start with. And so, the subdivision committee indicated that this subdivision lies within the city of Wichita urban growth area, and so according to the comprehensive plan, it needed to have greater density for the road that we were building. So, we did redesign it with a higher density of lots. They suggested doubling the lots to 40 and rezoning to SF20 zoning district. That was their recommendation. To keep the one-acre minimum size, we were only able to get 35 lots, which became acceptable to the subdivision committee upon our second submittal of the sketch plan. Once that sketch plan was approved, we submitted the revised preliminary plat with those 35 lots, and it was approved with a stipulation that the owner communicate with the neighborhood to the east regarding access. They were objecting to traffic on the public county road that goes through Prairie Crossing Second Edition, which is called Reese Street. Mr. Roberts attended a neighborhood meeting and listened to their concerns. To accommodate their concerns, he's planning to phase his construction, beginning at the west end, coming in from 167th. You can see that there's a small area of access to 167th at the northwest corner of the property. Upon completion of the development of approximately 70% of the lots in Phase 1, he will then proceed with Phase 2, which would then connect to Shade Street at the east property line, which was platted as a contingent right-of-way in the Prairie Crossing Second Edition. His attorney, Cody Branham, is preparing restrictive covenants that will restrict construction traffic out of Roberts Edition through the Prairie Crossing Second Edition, and so they would be asked to use 167th Street entrance. He also plans to install a monument sign at the 167th Street entrance to make that the main entrance to his subdivision. But he's still interested in the connectivity for emergency vehicles and general traffic, but he will encourage the residents of Roberts Edition to use 167th Street as the front or main entrance to the subdivision. The subject of a fire gate came up at the planning commission meeting. There has been some research. It's been determined that a gate could be installed for approximately $5,000. One of the subdivision committee members asked a representative from the neighborhood to the east if they would be willing to participate in the cost of that, and the answer was a very solid no. My client, John Roberts, has concerns about installing a gate that might require maintenance, and in the case of an emergency, if it failed, he could have liability as well as continued maintenance costs. Shade Street in the Prairie Crossing Second Edition going west from Reese Road was platted as a contingent right-of-way, 70 feet wide, and it was unimproved until Mr. Roberts built his house on the southeast corner of his property. And so, he paid in excess of $100,000 to improve Shade Street going west from Reese Road. After that was constructed, so he has access there, and then at the northeast corner of his subdivision, you see that little notch, and there's a house constructed there. So, those two have access, as does the lot to the east of that. After the road was built, that lot on the north side of Shade and west side of Reese added access to Shade Street. So, since no agreement has been reached regarding a separation gate, we're respectfully requesting the approval of this item based on standard planning practices regarding connectivity between subdivisions. I stand for any questions.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you.
Any questions from the commission at this point? I don't. Well, I have one quick question, and that is, I'm pretty familiar with fire gates. I think, somebody can answer, maybe, are they inspected by our fire department every year, annually or something? Routine inspections for maintenance on fire gates, do we know? Maybe out of your, Chris, might be out of your world.
And it might be, Mr. Chairman. What exactly was the question again?
Well, the fire gates, I'm kind of familiar with some fire gates in communities that are, they're in the districts I'm at, the, the.
I know, I know that drives are not, I'm not sure about the gates. I don't believe they are. I'll send Chief Williams a text quickly and see if I can find that out for you, Chairman.
Okay. That's all right. All right. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions? Oh, no. I don't see so far, so, next speaker, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name's Cody Branham. I'm a local real estate attorney. I represent the property owner, Mr. Roberts. I just wanted to speak very briefly on some of the issues that have been raised by neighbors that you all referenced through some communications that you all received. It's my understanding that the only objection raised with this development is this access issue that we're talking about, which I think debatably is more of a plating question, but I get, you know, we're here today, let's talk about it. You know, just respectfully, in my opinion, the extent to which these neighbors to the east and northeast believe that traffic is going to dramatically increase through their neighborhood, I think is speculative, and you just need to look at what surrounds the development to see that. You know, if residents of this neighborhood are going east of really Mays Road, more likely than not, they're going to exit at 167th, go south, get on Kellogg, and go east that direction. And then eventually, the development to the south and the preliminary plat that was approved by subdivision with that contingency on, you know, work something out with your neighbors, that contemplates a road connecting to that development to the south. We've been in communication with that developer. Their timeline is roughly five to 10 years away before their development reaches that point where they would be ready to install a road. You know, as Mr. Garber mentioned, there's nothing that restricts traffic through that development on the east northeast at this point. Any one of us could drive through that neighborhood if we felt so inclined to do so. And as Mr. Garber mentioned, our intention is to begin development on the west and then eventually move east. I am preparing a declaration of covenants for the eventual homeowners association that will govern this neighborhood, and that has items addressing those points in there as well. Also, just generally encouraging folks to use the 167th entrance as the quote-unquote "official" entrance into the neighborhood to try to minimize that traffic there to the east, and, you know, for a fairly large period of time, depending on how much demand there is, 167th will be the only entrance into the neighborhood. And so, at the beginning, that'll be the only way in and out of the neighborhood until we eventually get to Phase 2 there on the east. Just by the sheer proximity to the major roadways, in my opinion, most of these residents are going to use 167th Street entrance more commonly. I understand, you know, this is a zoning item. The Unified Zoning Code lays out some factors for consideration. Of course, opposition of, from neighboring property owners is just one of several items that, you know, we need to consider, and, you know, we need to look at the bigger context. There's a high demand for housing right now, not only in Cedric County, but across the nation. I represent a lot of home builders here locally. They can't build homes fast enough. And so, my concern is that if we were to limit the number of homes, the number of lots that would be permitted, or limit the number of lots that could be developed, that that's essentially a vote against those families that would like to build themselves a nice new home, maybe even some families that live here locally now, maybe some that would come here from out of state. And so, I think it's fair to consider that. You know, as Mr. Garber mentioned, our client came out of pocket in six-figure amount for the extension of Sage Street, and today, there are properties in that neighborhood that have their driveways accessing off that street that was, you know, extended there. And there are certainly no qualms about, you know, him coming out of pocket and doing it at that point. It's also a reality that when you move to an area that is not overly developed, and you don't own or have control over the neighboring property, there's always the risk that you don't know what may happen in the future, right? And when that neighborhood off of Reese was developed, they could have taken measures at that point to try to restrict traffic at that point. They didn't do so, and this is a natural consequence of that, is that development continues to happen, and so this is, this is just, you know, a natural course of those things. As they mentioned, no protest petition was filed. I don't, I don't know if any neighboring property owners are here today to voice their objection, but I do think that sort of speaks volumes about this, and so I will happily use the rest of my time. I'm available for any questions, should there be any.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Bran. I don't see any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Anybody else from the public want to address the commission on this item? Okay. I don't see any, so we will close the public comment. So we will close the public comment and bring the discussion back to the bench. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, I guess to preface this, I'm a little disappointed in how we got to this point. When it came before the Planning Commission, the objections should have been heard by the MAPC, and they weren't. In addition, I'm a little disappointed that this is a zoning case, and plating got involved in it somehow. And as a result of the plating being involved in it, there's a lot of confusion. So it's a very simple zoning case. It's a difficult case once we throw plating in it, but it doesn't, plating doesn't apply to zoning. So that's what put us in this quandary that we're in right now. As a matter of fact, when it was briefed to my Citizens Advisory Board, it failed eight to one. And again, it failed because it was brought as a plating case, the way that it was presented, rather than as a zoning case. And I, as a person that has a Citizens Advisory Board, I don't try and sway that because I have to remain impartial when it comes before this commission. So I listened to what they had to say, but the way that it was presented to my Citizens Advisory Board as really a plating case, they didn't understand the difference between the two, and so there was some confusion. So at my next meeting, I'm going to have to have a little education to explain the difference between zoning and plating. But as I said during my meeting, I will not interfere because I can't and still stay impartial in order to be able to vote at this position. So I guess I've got a question for Justin, if you don't mind coming up.
Yes, Commissioner.
I think the zoning is really straightforward. But the question I've got is, can we approve this with a quick protective overlay, that we approve this, and that the protective overlay states something to the effect that they can develop lots 1 through 30, and 31 through 35 will be able to be developed once the plat is finalized, so that we can find out the direction of traffic flow? Because I understand there is the chance, by the time that this gets developed, that there may be another alternative way in and out of this facility, either through Talia or some other area. So is that a possibility?
Commissioner Dennis, Justin Wagner, Assistant County Counselor. Yes, I do believe that one of the options that the board could undertake today would be to approve this with a protective overlay. I'm referring to the zoning code in particular. One of the bases for issuing a protective overlay involves putting in place restrictions on access to abutting properties and nearby roads, including specific design features. So I think the zoning code contemplates that could be an option. I would suggest, if that was the will of the board to do something, to approve this with a protective overlay, I don't think we'd want to get specific on the numbers, other than perhaps saying, you know, I think one of the things, and this may dovetail some with what Mr. Branham was contemplating, I'm not sure in terms of what he had in mind for any restrictive covenants. And I think a lot of what he was talking about was restrictive covenants that would be not part of the plating process, that would be part of the homeowners association. But there could be, and there has been utilized before, in talking with planning staff, there have been situations where restrictive covenants have been part of the plat, or a condition of approval for a plat, that a second point of entrance would be required to be installed once more than 30 lots had been built. And I think that's, in this case, I don't think you'd want to put a number at like 35, because it's possible the plat they end up submitting may be different than that number. But I think you could clarify that it's really, in this case, it's the fire code that's requiring the dual access points for emergency response. So I think you could either have the protective overlay refer to the fire code having jurisdiction. I say the fire code having jurisdiction because the city of Wichita had unilaterally annexed this property once it's platted. Or I think you could do it based on the number of lots, my understanding, and I would look to Scott Wadel and J.R. Cox if they have any, if they differ with that. But I believe the city of Wichita fire code parallels the county's fire code, but I can't say with any certainty on the 30-lot limitation. I think it's drawn from the International Fire Code, and I believe that stayed, remained the same in the versions that are adopted by both governing bodies. But I think that is something that the board could do, Commissioner Dennis, if that's the will of the board, as a way of limiting when this access would be put in place, and when it would be triggered, I suppose.
Okay. Thanks, Justin. Can I ask the attorney then, for the Roberts, to address any kind of protective overlay? Would this be acceptable to the applicant? And if so, what is your drawers on it?
Sure. I think our preference would be to approve it without a protective overlay. That's our, you know, option A, so to speak. But of course, we recognize the jurisdiction that the commission has within that. I believe, as Justin was mentioning, the development of some restrictive covenants that are designed, not necessarily as a protective overlay to say you cannot develop these last five lots until a second access point, but generally go towards, you know, minimizing access through the east. I think something that would be appropriate, I see the city of Wichita do this often, is basically enter into a developer's agreement between the county and the property owner, saying, hey, here are the major things that are going to be restricted. You're going to do the phases, like you talked about. You're going to start with the west and then eventually go east. Here are other things that we can put in place, restrictions on construction vehicles, things like that, in order to minimize the traffic going through there. I also think that, I think there are a number of ways to address the issue. I get the sense that the concern from the neighbors with traffic is maybe congestion and/or safety. As I understand, there are a lot of families that live out there, and I can certainly understand that. I think there are some traffic items that they could undertake to, you know, decrease speed, things like that, speed bumps, you know, minimizing the traffic. So our preference, if we had a choice, would be to not impose a protective overlay, restricting either the number of lots or when development on the last five could occur. But we certainly recognize that, you know, the will of the commission may be to impose such a protective overlay. In that event, I believe my client would prefer, rather than saying you can't build more than 30 lots here, because that would require us to basically start over the plating process, we would prefer, forced between those choices, to do some sort of restriction to say, you can do your 35 lots, but you cannot develop the last five, which, in our phasing, would be the five kind of in the northeast corner of the property until some secondary access point is agreed upon, whether that eventually is connecting into Shade Street. Maybe we can work out the differences with the neighbors. Or who knows what the future may hold of the development to the south? It's possible there may be, you know, some roadway more feasible at that point. Who knows what the development to the north's going to look like? You know, maybe once this gets undertaken, that property gets developed. So in my opinion, that's sort of kicking the issue down the road a bit, but I can certainly understand if that was the decision of the commission today.
Let me ask you a question about the covenants. If you want to go the covenant direction, those are not enforced by any kind of government.
Sure.
They're only enforced by someone taking a private lawsuit to enforce that.
That's correct.
So I don't know how that you'd enforce a covenant.
Yeah. What I would recommend for that is to, and I think this would take some working with Justin or other folks, to develop, what I kind of referenced was a development agreement between the property owner and the county, saying these covenants that we're going to put in for the homeowners association, saying, here's going to be Phase One, Phase Two, construction vehicles, all those things. Go into a development agreement, thereby the county would have enforcement power should, you know, the property owner or future property owners in this development choose to ignore that. Because you're right, the reality is with enforcing homeowners association covenants, it's really members of the homeowners association themselves that have enforcement power. And so I can understand the view that that kind of lacks the teeth that you may be looking for. And so I would recommend the appropriate remedy in that case is, you know, have the county be party to these restrictive covenants, and any amendments to those restrictive covenants would require us to come get county approval, depending on what the future may hold, if one of those restrictions just really isn't, doesn't make any sense anymore. I believe that would be appropriate in that case to, again, you know, direct folks, encourage folks as much as we can without outright prohibiting it, to use the 167th entrance.
But I've never heard of the county being a party to a covenant. That would be news to me.
Yeah. I know that the city of Wichita, the city of Derby, I see it very often. They're essentially often called developers' agreements, which is agreements between a governing body and the property owner, saying, here's how this property is going to be developed. And that way, if there is some violation of that, the county, or eventually potentially the city, if this is annexed in, could have some say in that. And, you know, if there's abuses or violations of those restrictions, come in and stop that activity.
One final question for you, sir. Is there a rush on getting something done right now?
Only that the market is asking for this, really. You know, certainly if the commission were to defer a vote, or, you know, something to that effect, I don't think, I mean, we don't have funds invested to the sense that if we lose days, we're going to lose money or anything like that. But like I mentioned in my previous presentation, there's a high demand for housing right now. And so any sense of urgency is really that, that, you know, we'd like to get this developed and be able to start constructing homes on this property, you know, as soon as we can. Understanding that constructing a home in and of itself is a several months, sometimes years, depending on the weather process.
Okay. I see a couple of other commissioners have questions, so I will wait and hear what they have to say before I make any kind of motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. While you're up there, where would the second access point be off of 167th, say, potentially in the future? Where would it be?
It wouldn't be off 167th. So as we sit here today, I don't know if you can see my mouse moving on there, there's going to be one entrance off of 167th, roughly right here. That is going to be the main entrance. There's a reserve area noted there on the preliminary plat, where our client intends to build some sort of monument. You see these often with developments. It'll have some name of the neighborhood on it, and it'll be viewed as, you know, kind of the official entrance into the neighborhood. What is also contemplated potentially someday, and our preliminary plat contemplates this, if you can see here, this neighborhood has roadways coming from the south and the west. And so what could eventually happen, depending on how quickly that development proceeds, is a second access point on the south side of this development, which would then potentially eliminate the need for access onto Shade Street there on the east. The problem with that is the timing. We've talked to that developer about what they're projecting, when their development may be ready to reach that far, and they're several years away from that. And so, you know, who's to say what the future may hold? It may be that the pace of our development does not exceed the pace of their development, so that, you know, by the time we're ready to develop our east X number of lots, that that developer is ready and we can do a second access point there. We just don't know what the future may hold. It very well could be that, for whatever reason, our development has more demand, and we are ready to build on the east X number of lots quicker than the development to the south, which then we get to the thirty excess of 30-lot number, which then, under fire code, requires us to have a second access point.
Okay. And remind me, what is the timeframe of this development?
We don't have any particular timeframe set in stone at this point. I mean, ideally, you know.
What's your goal?
Well, I'd have to talk to the property owner about this one. I don't know if we have any, you know, maybe a year or two. I truly don't know the answer to that. I apologize for that. We would like to go as quickly as we possibly can, right? And so hopefully zoning is approved, we get a final plat approved, and then we begin that process of some infrastructure financing to get some roadways started to be built on the west side, and then wait for folks to approach us, put the property on the market to start selling some of these lots. It's also feasible that, rather than selling these lots piecemeal, that one home builder may want to come in and buy all the lots in one fell swoop. And so we are mindful of that, and wanting to ensure that whatever protections are put in place today run with the property and are binding on all future parties.
Okay. I have a couple of questions for Scott. Thank you for your time.
Sure. Thank you.
I see, you know, as I read through the letters last night, I see the public notice, one letter states that the public notice was not posted before the first round of zoning. Can you address that?
That the public notice was not posted?
That's what it says here.
Hmm. Maybe they're indicating the sign?
So I guess I'm just a little concerned about how this kind of went down as far as, I'm really shocked there were no protest petitions. And so that really kind of shocks me because of all the interest and all of the, so I wonder, was notification given?
Yes, we followed our standard protocols for this one, including publication in the newspaper, mailouts to properties within 1,000 feet. And my understanding is the sign was posted on the property prior to the MAPC meeting, the public hearing at the Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, so there was opportunity to submit protest petitions?
That is correct. And that was stated multiple times during the MAPC meeting, where people were in attendance virtually. We know that they could hear us because of the comments that they made when they said, hey, we'd like to go back to that case. And there was quite some dialogue about the opportunity for protest petitions, as well as they would have received a letter, or at least known that Kathy Morgan was the staff person responsible for it, and they could reach out to her and talk with her about the process as well.
Okay. The other thing that kind of troubles me is the fact that the Planning Commission wouldn't go back and hear this. So, I mean, that's kind of out of our control, but I get it, sometimes these meetings can be long, but I think the public has a right to be heard, especially when something is this important. So that's just a little comment about that. These cases, this is an unusual one. I, as far as, you know, the human behavior, as far as how people are going to utilize this road, I mean, you can never really absolutely define human behavior and how people are going to drive through a neighborhood. So I feel like that's still, you know, to be determined. I do understand the demand for housing. We're 50,000 housing units short in this community, so I understand that. I also understand individual property rights, and I think that that's important to each individual and how they want to do, what they want to do with their property. So these are some of the things that are kind of going through my mind. But I just can't believe that they didn't file a protest petition. That really kind of baffles me. So I just want to make sure that notice was given, you know, especially when we see letters here that they're saying it wasn't. So that really is kind of troubling, and I want to make sure that our processes are well-defined, that the public has the appropriate amount of time to submit those kinds of things. So that's kind of where I'm at with this. Thank you for your time.
Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a number of questions, and thank you for the presentation. My first question is along, similar to what Commissioner Cruz just talked about. So we want to, normally when you present these packets, normally there's a radius around the subject property.
That's correct.
I don't see that in this packet today. How many of these properties along Reese Road or Shade Street, how many of those properties are within that 1,000-foot radius?
That is correct. There is not a protest map included in the packet. I would have to measure it out, sir. I don't have that with me.
And it's clear, again, so, you know, I think it's important for us to confirm that these folks were in fact notified through a mailing that this was an opportunity for them to be heard. I understand the protest petition is 0%.
That is correct. And that would be why the map was not included. We do have copies of the letters that were sent out. We do have copies of the addresses that we sent them to. That's included in the mailing list that is required to be submitted with the application. That would be the form that we would know we sent it out, a certified letter. So that is how we would know that they got sent out.
I agree with, again, another comment that Commissioner Cruz just made. I think people have a right to change the use of their property. I think this is the process we follow. And it, you know, it includes a community discussion. And it's interesting to me that the opponents... And it's interesting to me that the opponents have really risen to, to be heard, that I'm aware of. I mean, I'm not seeing a huge, a huge response even today. I don't know, I, I understand that they did appear before MAPC. They obviously did. They did appear there, obviously.
And these were the individuals who contacted afterwards. There were a group of them that were using the same device, and they commented indicating that their microphone, they weren't able to get their microphone working during this portion of the agenda, this item on the agenda. And it was only after this item had been voted on by the MAPC that they were able to communicate with us.
In fairness, I wish there was a way that we could ensure that the due process has been respected. They, they need to be heard, and I'm concerned that MAPC did not, I guess, understand the technology. Basically, they should, in my opinion, they should have gone back and provided it out, provided that opportunity. Commissioner Dennis mentioned a moment ago about the cab board was a little bit confused about plating versus zoning, and, and that's a concern. I don't know how that would have happened either, but I think that the risk of, let me just say, no, no offense to the cab, I love them, I think they're great people, but I think that the, the property rights cases have a process through MAPC and then through secondary hearings such as one we're having today. And I don't know that, I'm not sure that a, a third stop on that process necessarily adds to the, adds to the evidence we need to make decisions. I, I, I feel sorry for the applicants and the opponents having to go to three different places to make their case. And to the extent that it sounds like none of the opponents or the proponents actually appeared before the cab, it might be, it might be interpreted that there's not interest or not advocacy, you know, on that side of the equation, and I think that might be misunderstood. I, I don't know that anybody who's on either side of this issue really has to appear before a cab to make their case, and it, and it should not be interpreted necessarily as evidence on how they should vote. But the fact that they are exactly opposite of MAPC is also very concerning. So I'm, I guess as I sit here today, I'm kind of, I'm gonna try to disregard, if you will, the, the, the vote of the cab board, yes, sir.
And if I may, sir, I just received information, confirmation, that ten of the properties along Reese immediately to the east would have been notified as part of the notification area.
Okay, there's actually three lots to the direct, direct east. They're, they're, they're south of Shade Street. Were they also included, I assume?
They weren't specific on which properties. I just received information that there were ten. It would be properties within a thousand feet of the subject.
And this might be a question for the, for the applicant possibly, maybe for you, maybe for you as well. I don't know which one can answer this. Can you please confirm whether, confirm whether Reese and Shade are gravel, or I should say township maintained gravel roads, or they paved? And what's the intent for the, again, I know it hasn't been platted yet, but I'm curious about the fact that this is adjoining a city of Wichita. I assume at some point this probably will be gobbled up by, by an annexation move at some point. And I understand that the, the property to the, to the southwest, which right now we have, we have no information on that, but I understand there's, there's intent at some point to develop that as well. I, I guess I see this as a future growth area. I'm curious as to what is the requirements for stormwater and drainage and paving and all those types of things?
Yes, the Commissioner Howell, the Reese Road and Shade Street are both asphalt paved. Those are built to county standards, and county, county widths are maintained. I don't know if there's a posted speed limit, but the, the radiuses of those curves on Reese Road are between 250 and 300 feet. So that discourages any type of fast-moving vehicles through the subdivision. I'm not aware of plans to the southwest, to the west of Pike Edition, whether there's opportunity for tie-in there eventually or not.
Okay.
Drainage, you mentioned drainage. There's a drainage channel that flows from north to south through the middle of the, of the subdivision, and the developer plans to develop a pond feature there. And then it's part of the drainage plan. The drainage plan has been approved.
Okay, again, that has to go through MAPC, and it would be a plat. Obviously, we define those requirements, so.
Yes.
In a, in a sense, I view MAPC as the, all even by its title, but Sedgwick County also has appointments on there, so I have to recognize this is the city of Wichita's voice in, in potential future.
That's correct.
Annexation. This is their voice, is when they do the plating, so.
And so they pointed out that, that the original sketch plan did not meet the comprehensive plan because of the Wichita urban growth area. So that's the reason for the change, and the requirement to increase the density and change to SF20 zoning.
Very good. I don't know if Mr. Weber has something he wants to say, because he stood up. I'm not curious if I've spurred a comment from Mr. Weber.
Jim Weber, Director of Public Works. I just wanted to add that, that road, those two roads are actually maintained by the township. They've been assigned to the township. They, they do forget from time to time because they don't need much work, and we have had a conversation with them during this process to remind them that it's theirs, but it is assigned to the township.
And, and again, I assume these were paved through, initially through a benefit district, and they paid for these initially with special assessment taxes?
Two different ones. The Reese Road went in on a gravel road first, and then after they kind of got established, they wanted to get it paved. We did a petition project to pave that road, and then later, Mr. Roberts and his wife, with the property to the west, wanted to extend it over and develop right there. And that was a separate project, and he, it's been mentioned earlier, but he did pay for all of that stub out across from Reese Road and into this property.
Is this Illinois Township? Do you know?
I think it's Attica.
Attica. Have they spoken to this in any way?
I've not heard from them. I don't know.
This might impact their, their require, their responsibility in terms of future maintenance. I'm just curious if, if this, if this was to be connected to, to Shade Street, and say, for example, Wichita did annex this subject property today, I don't know if they would annex those homes along Reese and Shade, but nevertheless, if they didn't, did not annex those, annex those, that means that traffic potentially would increase considerably along those roads, and would end up being a township responsibility to maintain that even, you know, despite the higher traffic count.
So just to be clear, that's a county standard road. It's built like most of our section line roads. So traffic is really an issue for the pavement itself. And I guess to Commissioner Cruz's point, I think it was you, we really can't predict where they're going. If I was me, I'd be headed to College Road, 167th, most of the time. It seems more likely to me that the people in Reese Road are gonna try to get back to Goddard, the school system, they're like, more likely to cut through here than they are to drive north to, to go back west, but it is, you can't tell.
I, I think I have maybe one other question and, and a comment, and I'll, I'll stop talking. So I understand that the, the nearest fire station is about three miles. This is the Station 30, I think Station 30 had written down here, whatever it was, Station 30, or I lost my, wrote it down now. But anyway, there's a station about three miles away, close to, on the outskirts of Goddard, and I would assume that if there was a fire call, more than likely, they would, they would go down US 54, US 400, if you will, to 167th, and they would enter the, enter the neighborhood there. If it was a really, you know, a significant call, there might, you know, might, might be a secondary response from someplace to the, to the east. It would come in from maybe a secondary access point. But do we know, so my question is this, do we know regards, with regards to our, our requirement for a secondary entrance to a neighborhood that has more than 30 parcels? Is that something that's unique to Sedgwick County, or is this some type of a national standard?
I don't know. That's been embedded in the subject of the regulations here, I think, but.
It's part of the international fire code, so that is not unique to us.
Okay. I guess my comment, so here's my, here's my comment. I kind of agree with what Commissioner Dennis said a minute ago. I, I believe that, that the party that has the greatest interest in, interest in seeing this go forward, of course, is the developer and the, and the applicant. And I, and I think to the extent that they have less than 30, 30 lots or less, I think their access point to 167th is adequate and meets our requirements, our regulations, if you will. At the point at which they would go to a 31st parcel, or again, develop a 31st parcel, not, makes you use the word develop, not just create through a plat, but actually construct, if you will, a, a building on a 31st parcel, that should trigger, if you will, a requirement, a requirement for secondary access. And again, I think you're, you're motivated and you're, and you're incentivized right now to, to work out a solution either to the south or to the, or to the east. And if it happens to be to the east, I think that it would be, it would be fine, in my opinion, to, to allow for a fire gate. I think that the neighborhood to the east would be interested in seeing a fire gate versus open access. So again, I think they're also motivated to come to the table, knowing that you have the, a right, in my opinion, to, to connect to Shade Street. So I think right now there's, there's motivation by, by the parties to, to negotiate and come to a consensus between the two, and I think that's the right answer. If you have to connect to Shade Street to, to meet this requirement, then I would, I would encourage, I don't know if it should be through the protective overlay, but I think a fire gate is a reasonable solution, and I think that both parties have an interest in, in having this move forward, in, in terms of, your interest is you want to, you want to develop, develop more than 31 parcels probably, and the interest, interest of the, of the neighborhood to the east is they paid for their roads, and they don't want more traffic. I think they would be interested in protecting what they've invested in, and having the cost of a half of a $5,000 gate is not a lot of money. I think you guys can work out an agreement between the two of you. So I, I would like to see this move forward. I think the fire gate, when necessary, is, is a reasonable solution. I would, I would love to see a, a motion that would support allowing this to move forward, but with the idea that if you need to connect to Shade Street, that the parties would come together and negotiate the cost and maintenance of a, of a gate. And if they don't want to do that, I guess, not having a gate's another option. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez?
Thank you. I, I do have a question. If plating did not come up in this, would we be having the same discussion if it was just solely a zoning case?
I think the answer is, it depends, but most likely not. Because a lot of the issues that have been talked about in terms of, you know, fire access, connectivity to the road network, number of lots, layout, configuration, connections to adjoining subdivisions are covered during the plating process. Zoning is about land use, and in this case, just simply how many dwelling units can be, would be allowed on the property.
Okay. I would agree with my fellow commissioners up here that I'm disappointed that the neighbors didn't get heard when MAPD approved this, and, and they didn't have those conversations in that meeting and didn't go back to them. I mean, that's really hard for me to take their consideration and into what it should be. I don't necessarily think that it would change anything, but I do think it would, it's important that the people this is going to affect the most right now deserve to be heard. I, I know that, you know, they're not here today, and they didn't come to the Commissioner Dennis's meeting either, but, I mean, just reading these emails, there's quite a few of them, so I wish they had the opportunity to have spoken during that meeting, but I mean, I'll wait to hear what Commissioner Dennis has as a motion, but I, I am disappointed they didn't get to speak. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, as I said earlier, if it was presented as a zoning issue, it was a pretty simple, cut-and-dried issue. As I recall, the staff summary sheet that was provided to MAPC and to my Citizens Advisory Board had the plat right on the front page, which then changed the entire complex, complexion of this issue. So my inclination right now is to return this back to the MAPC and have them consider it as a zoning issue, and strictly a zoning issue, because that's what it is, and return, and make sure that the notifications go out to, to all the appropriate parties, and that they have an opportunity to speak during that, and bring it back to us as a zoning issue. So I, I make a motion that we return this to the MAPC with my comments. Okay, I'll, I'll second that. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for clarification, so is the requirement to post the zoning case as it, as it was initially, and is there opportunity for protest petition? Are we going back to, going back to the very beginning, or are we somewhere in the middle? I'd like to just have some clarification as to what this, what is the requirement to MAPC?
I would assume, I would assume that whenever something's sent back to the planning commission, that it follows the same path and pattern that every returned item to a planning commission does happen. I'm not willing to make up new rules when it's sent back to the planning commission.
Chairman, I, I agree. I just want, I'd like some clarification so I understand what's about to happen. Thank you.
If it's helpful, what I'd like to suggest is that we can make sure to send out emails to all the people that we've received emails from. We can also send out letters to all the people and properties that are included in the notification area for this case. Likewise, anyone who's outside of the notification area that has provided their address, or even if it's a telephone number, we'll reach out to them as well. When it comes to the protest process, it's, that is something that's usually reserved just for the one time that it does go to the MAPC, so I don't know that we would repeat that unless there was a request for you to provide some kind of opportunity for, for us to do that. I'm not quite sure how that would work. But we can certainly make sure to, to reach out through all those communication means, phone, emails, letters, to anyone who's been involved in this case or notified previously. Is that helpful?
To me, it is. I just like, like to say, even if there was a protest petition today, which there isn't one, had we returned this back to MAPC and it comes back to us a second time, it still requires a simple majority at that point for any action, supermajority or just a simple majority, but.
In this case, it would not require a supermajority, but if there was a protest, you would still have to override the protest.
Okay, I understand. And I guess that's why, that's why this matters. Thank you.
Commissioner Dennis? Very quickly, I've been doing zoning and plating for 13 years now, and I've never heard of us opening it back up for a protest position, petition when it is sent back to the MAPC. I, I do want them to have an opportunity to speak at the MAPC, to make their concerns known, and make sure that we get those concerns back here when we make a final decision, but I don't believe that we need to take care of any kind of a protest petition at this time. If we'd approve it, it would have taken three votes today to refer back, takes three votes. The only time that we would have required four votes is it either to put the protective overlay in or to deny, so that's where I'm at right now. So my motion still stands as originally made. Thank you. Okay. There's a motion in a second. I'd like to comment just that the developer and the property owner, you've heard a lot, one commissioner cannot dictate all the rules about what you should or should not do. It has to come from the planning commission approval, it has to come from a majority of the commissioners. There's just lots of times it, it gets a little bit in the weeds, and don't forget that it is the, the majority of the commission, regardless of, now, lots of times, we respect the commissioner that the development is in their district, and that, that usually is of influence. I'd also like to remind all of us that we do have appointments to the planning commission, and as we've all expressed our concern about what goes on at the planning commission, it's not unusual for each commissioner to call and talk to your direct appointee and remind them of what you may or may not be happy with, how the planning commission works. So that's it. And I'm just a little dismayed that, that the developer and the owner has, that has, has been said, they've paved the roads to county standards. The individual developer has even added another, I think I heard, 100,000 out of his pocket, their pocket, to pave others. So it appears that this group is trying to play by all of the right rules, and it, it hurts me that, that we seem to have, from this bench, a little bit of government overreach. I, I don't know why we are, but, but it is what it is. I, I come from, I think we should extend developers' more red carpet treatment instead of red tape treatment, but that's what has happened today, and we have a motion to get back to the planning commission, and hopefully you can get on it sooner than later, and, and that's why we have a planning commission, is because they know all these rules, drainage, all that stuff, way better than we do as individuals. So those are just some of my comments, and we do have a motion in a second, and don't have other comments, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis? Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Mechner?
Aye. So it'll go back to the planning commission. So good luck, and we'll see you whenever we see you again. Thank you for the time addressing us. We'll take a, well, we'll not take a quick break, but we'll, we'll plod on, so. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item J, CON 2021-0009, conditional use to allow camper and boat storage on property zone RR Royal Residential in the Goddard area of influence, generally located on the south side of West Sixth Street South and 1/8 mile east of South 199th Street West, 1972-1, West Sixth Street South.
Okay, please state your name for the commission.
Scott Wade, old Planning Department. Thank you, sir. Would you like me to proceed, sir, or should I hold on?
Yeah, sure, that's all right. Go ahead. I think we've had some information, so we're getting some more information.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So this is a conditional use request in order to allow for camper and boat storage at the site. Subject site is located in unincorporated Cedric County, near the southeast corner of 199th Street and Sixth Street near Goddard. The site is just under five acres. It's 4.76 acres, again, zoned rural residential, and is in use for large lot residential. The owner has been using the property for vehicle storage without the required conditional use. This is a violation of the Unified Zoning Code. The vehicle storage has been operated by the property owners of business for at least two years. The storage area currently occupies approximately 29,000 square feet. We've got some aerial photos that will show some of that. The recommendation is for approval of the conditional use for this, and there are a number of conditions that would be associated with that approval or recommended with that approval that includes that the, in terms of location, the storage area must be behind the principal structure and at least 20 feet away from residences or screened appropriately. In terms of area, that the storage area cannot exceed 10,000 square feet, which is less than the 29,000 square feet in which they're operating currently. In terms of use, only operable vehicles, and that it would be limited to boats and RVs. In terms of screening, that screening of the storage area would be required from all areas of contiguous residential zoning, which surrounds it in all directions. In terms of paving, that the entrance and exit storage area must all have all-weather surfacing. In terms of lighting, that lighting must minimize light trespass and glare. In terms of noise, that no sound amplification may be allowed. In terms of duration, and this is a little bit unique for this one, that this conditional use will expire after 10 years and can be renewed administratively by the Planning Department for subsequent five-year periods. And that was included because of the proximity to Goddard and its growth area. In terms of plans, that a revised site plan and landscape plan must be submitted and approved prior to issuance of building permits. Here's some aerials of the site, and you can see, there's a number of different aerials here. So here's an aerial showing no vehicles stored on the property, at least not a large number of them. Here's another image. This one comes from Google. You can see that there are a number of RVs out on the property. This is an image from the city's GIS system from this year, I believe, and it shows a number of vehicles out on the site. In terms of context, properties to the north, east, south, and west are all zoned rural residential properties. To the east, south, and west are developed and in use for large lot, single-family residences. Property to the north is in use for agricultural use. In terms of history, on April 5, the District III Citizens Advisory Board considered the application, voted nine to zero to recommend approval, subject to the conditions. No members of the public spoke in opposition to the application at that meeting. On April 8, the public hearing for this item was held at the Planning Commission meeting. The Planning Commission voted 11-0 to recommend approval, subject to the conditions. Several individuals spoke in opposition to the application. On April 12, the Goddard Planning Commission considered the application, voted six to zero, to recommend approval, subject to the conditions. Two individuals spoke in opposition. Here's the map from the future growth concept map from the comprehensive plan, showing Goddard's growth area, urban growth area. Here's the protest map. In terms of protest petitions, valid protest petitions were submitted totaling 42.36% of the protest area, which exceeds the 20% threshold by the state. In terms of actions, the recommended action is to approve the conditional use, subject to the conditions specified in the staff report and highlighted in this presentation. This would require four of five votes due to the protest petitions exceeding 20%. Alternatives are to deny the application and make alternative findings. This would be an override of the MAPC recommendation and requires four of five votes, or you can return the case to the MAPC with a statement specifying the basis for the failure to approve or deny. This requires a simple majority, three of five votes. Here's the site plan for the property submitted by the property owner. The blue area is the proposed storage location with a new drive that would be added. Here are photos for the case. So this is looking south at the site. Looking north from the middle of the site, you can see a number of boats and RVs there. Looking east from the middle of the site, you can see the existing tree row along the east border of the property. This is looking to the southeast from the middle of the site. You can see the neighboring property to the south and the tree row. This is looking directly south. This is looking towards the west, to the north from the property, and photos from around the area. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Okay. Before we get into questions, I would like to state that I've received some ex parte communications, not talked directly to anybody, but have received some information, and I have not, and I'm ready to make a decision when we get to the decision time. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was about to say the exact same thing. I have had ex parte contact, and I have not made my mind up for a decision on this.
I mean, yeah. Commissioner Lopez?
The same. I've had the same contact, and I have not made up my mind. Thank you.
I don't believe I've had any contact, but I am keeping my mind open for this.
Thank you, Chairman. I also have received at least written, written information from some of the opponents. I don't believe I've had any conversations with either side of this issue, so I'm certainly on the fence, listening to reasons to vote one way or the other. Thank you.
Okay. We proceed. So at this time, do we have any questions for Mr. Wade? I don't see any, so we will open it up for public comment. We did have three people sign up ahead of time. We've also received a few emails. For the record, I think, Commissioner, I mean, Clerk, you have a copy of the emails we've received? Okay. We received three emails just right now. So we will open it up to the public comment. First up, I'm sorry. Commissioner Cruz?
I'd like to restate my, I have received communication, so, but I am keeping my mind up, but I'm sorry.
Okay. So we have, we have people that have signed up, in no particular order, if you're one of them.
Yes, my name is Vicky Strilo.
Okay, Vicky. You're the first on the list, so welcome to the commission meeting, and please feel free to address us.
Thank you very much for allowing us to speak. I'd like to go over the review of the findings based on the review criteria. The zoning and character of the neighborhood, vehicle storage yard is surrounded on three sides by homes, four homes. The planning committee will say that we have large lots, and we do. We have 42 acres, however, our home sits within 50 yards of the vehicle storage unit, or yard. We believe that a field or an area that's not surrounded by homes would be better suited. We don't have anything against a vehicle storage yard, however, we just don't feel like it should be surrounded by homes. We've talked to lots of people in our area. Nobody seems to know about the conditional usage for RVs and boats and storage, and nobody thinks it's appropriate, and we don't either. Suitability, there are no other businesses in the area. The county zoning rule, Section 3D 6MM, states no sales per requirement number three, and we feel that accepting money for storage is a sale, and that is totally being ignored. The extent to which detrimentally affect nearby property, the planning committee says regulations are in place to protect the property owners. Well, we feel like when we bought our property, our restrictive covenants were supposed to keep us safe from this sort of thing happening. They're in file with the courthouse, and they were given to us when we bought our land. The same covenants are also applied to Mr. Hedinger's land. He's ignoring them. The planning committee says there's no detrimental effect, but they did not ask the Wilsons, the Ilerts, us or the McCollis. We are the ones that filed the petitions of protest. We are all worried about security issues and our land being devalued. Additionally, the property at 740 South 199th Street, recently sold, and we were told that those owners are thinking about also doing a vehicle storage yard, and they're just waiting for your decision on this case to see if they will be able to do that. If they do, you will see us here again, opposing another vehicle storage unit, because more of our property will be affected. Conformance of requested change to the adopted or recognized comprehensive plan, they say that we're in the proposed urban growth area for Goddard for 2023. Hannah, we really don't care about 2023. We care about now. We're rural, we're a farm, and we're never going to sell our property, and it's not going to be involved in any urban growth. Impact of proposed development on community facilities, the community, the committee says that they are none. Well, they didn't ask the two storage facilities in Goddard or 15 other storage facilities, pardon me, in West Wichita. Business has been taking away from those folks, and in the Goddard meeting, six clients of Mr. Hediger showed up and said that they, you know, they wanted, there's convenience, they wanted to store their vehicles there, you know, it's an excellent facility, and I don't doubt that. However, each one of those six live in housing developments that have HOAs, and their HOAs protect them from this sort of thing happening. They don't have to, their neighbors don't have to look at their boats and RVs. We do. And we don't understand why homeowners associations have rights that we don't have with restrictive covenants. We don't think that's fair. And also, I called 15 of those storage units in West Wichita to see if they had availability for boats and large RVs and trailers and things, and they do. So it's not a problem with those clients not being able to find other storage. Lastly, opposition or support of neighborhood residents. The review criteria, this review criteria was left out of the planning committee's staff report. There are four families that are protesting this vehicle storage. I represent all of them. The other folks were not be able to be here today because of work and doctor's appointments and things, but I represent those folks, and we all reached independent decisions of protest, and I'd like to thank you very much for allowing us to speak.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Strilo. Is that how it's pronounced?
Yes, Strilo.
Okay. Thank you. There's a question from Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. Where is your, which house is yours?
Can I just point it out to you?
Sure.
We're right here.
Okay.
From our depth, we look right onto this, and these vehicles are parked all the way up in that area. And also, there's a school bus that's not supposed to be there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I believe that, Vicky, you provided a copy of the restrictive covenant through the mail.
Yes, I did.
So I recognize the fact I do have a copy of the restrictive covenant, and I would like to know, has staff reviewed this, and do they have a verification this is a legal document?
I would assume so. It's on file.
I would like to have someone from staff, I guess, speak to the issue.
Sure.
And also, in clause two of this, it describes the property in terms that I'm not going to be able to figure out where on the map this actually is, but I'd like to have someone verify that the property is described in clause two actually would include this subject property today. Thank you.
And Commissioner Howell, I might start off by explaining, because there was some discussion in the last zoning case about restrictive covenants, too. What's in front of us today is the public restriction on property uses. That's the zoning process. Restrictive covenants are a private instrument used to control property and how it's used. In the case before, we were talking about there is the ability, if the county or municipality can be a party to that, so that can happen, although it's not typical. In this case, the restrictive covenant, the county is not a party. I would suggest, in the term, in deciding the zoning case, the restrictive covenant not be, not saying you can't look at it or consider it, but it's not very relevant in the findings here. The reason I would say that is, again, it's a private restriction. Parties have the ability to enforce those restrictions, whether it's in court, you know, they can retain legal counsel and see what options are available to them, but they are not part of the public restriction on property usage. I'll tell you, I have not sat through and read through this restrictive covenant to see what loopholes there may be in it, whether it applies fully or does not apply to this property, just because it's really not part of what is in front of you on the zoning case. But anyone who, you know, any parties who are benefited by the restrictive covenant certainly have legal options to pursue, much like an HOA. That's, you know, we talked about the HOA restrictive covenants, that's the same thing. I mean, that's what, that's what the HOAs are enforcing, are the restrictive covenants that are privately held and maintained. So I haven't gone through and independently verified whether this is, in any way, limits the use that's proposed here, because that's a private matter between the parties. They can sort that out if they see fit to do so. What's at play today is the public restriction, whether this land use is appropriate for this property, or I should say, this conditional use is appropriate for this property.
Okay. Thank you for that. So let me just restate what you said in my own words, make sure I understand it. We, if we don't take into consideration this today, and we say that the conditional use is approved, ultimately is approved, they would potentially still have civil actions. They can, they can pursue this through a civil court and civil proceedings, and this might still, again, apply to that, but that's for some future hearings.
That's correct. And there can be any number of reasons that a restrictive covenant may be valid, may not be valid, may subsequently be able to be challenged. There's arguments that can be made, and again, that's, that's not something that I could sit here and tell you what arguments are at play on either side of that, but you're correct. I think that's something that the neighbors could certainly bring up and challenge. They could retain legal counsel to advise them and represent them on that. But it's, it's not really part of what you're deciding today, which is whether the public restriction on this makes sense to allow as a conditional use what's proposed.
I have other questions about, related to this, maybe I should wait till the hearing, until the public is done speaking before I ask my questions. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. I don't see any other questions. Next person to address us is Jim Strilo. Mr. Strilo, welcome to the commission meeting.
Well, thank you, gentlemen, or ladies also, sorry. I want to thank all of you for your service to the community. Sometimes it doesn't get said enough, but thank you very much for your service. What we have here is our housing development is not the biggest one. It's called the Galleys Edition. There's four homes in that, in that area, and then, and all of it's covered, but covenants that have been over 30 years old. We've been there over 27 years ourselves. The Wilsons to the east have been there over 25 years. The Ilerts, Wilsons to the west have been there over 25 years. The Ilerts have been there over 40 years. So well-established. We had a well-established method. Mr. Hedinger moved there about five to six years ago, and after that is when he chose to start his lot. Maybe an area, area of what the area around there is like, is that we, right across the street from Mr. Hedinger, there's a three to four million dollar house. Right down the street is a new development. A quarter mile away is another new development, which is, they're probably 550 to 600,000 dollars in value. To the west right there is a housing development that went debunked off of it because of the West Star decided to put power lines down that, and that developer decided to pull out, and that was supposed to be for luxury homes. To the north, there's also a house that's up there from 500 to 600,000 dollars. There's a lot up there that has 135 acres in it, it had a 35-acre lake on it. They're talking about developing that into new, new luxury homes right there. So we're not talking about an area that is, how to put it? We're talking about an area that's developing very well, let's put it that way. We've owned our, as I said, we've owned our ground for 27, or for 30 years right now. We, we develop it, we, it's our home to stay, and we, we love it. So anywhere north of Kellogg right there, there is, it's all RR zoning up there, and there is not one business up there that has special conditions or one business in that area. It's all residential, 100% our farm ground. To the develop, to the people that I talked to that are, that own the ground, large, large parts of ground, parcels around there, we're large, large parts of ground, parcels around there, were two, the people that, that had the original 160 acres right there that was going to be luxury homes, he turned around and he says, "I can't believe that the city, the county's taking this up," is going with the, with the idea of rezoning this. He says it's not appropriate for the area. Another one down the street is the one that owns the property straight across from Mr. Hedinger, and also on the corner right there of 119th, 199th and Maple. He's an old elderly man. I went over and talked to him. He turned around, and when he told me he had Parkinson's, I quit talking to him, because he said, that, that upsets him. He said, "This is not appropriate for the area." Again, also. So virtually, we have almost every people, persons around there, people around there have said, "No, it's not appropriate for the area." So.
Okay.
According to the MAPC right there, the, there are the cases cited on it, Golden versus Overland Park, in that they, they quote that these factors are the ones in which I, it would be well, well for a zoning body to bear in mind when hearing requests for change. Please pay attention to the sequence of, of what they're saying. Number one was the charter, the characteristic of the neighborhood. Number two is the zoning and use of, of properties nearby. Both of them, they, they cite that, this planning commission cited that, that it's section three D, section three D point six, which is the one that turns around, giving the authority to be able to put RV park, RV storage on rural, rural residential property. Doesn't say it's right for it to be there. It says it gives them the authority for it. So they take the authority to mean that they, they're going to go along with the people that want it, not the people that opposed it. No time in the past has anybody ever asked us, or our minority votes, our minority opinions been ever presented to any board that we've been at. It's always been the, the planning commission or the planning board that's already been, the train's already left its station a lot of times, what, what I can say about that.
Okay. Mr. Strelo, your, your time is kind of limited, but can you wrap it up?
Yes, I sure will.
Thank you, sir.
So the suitability, the characteristic of the neighborhood, well, I already talked about the characteristics of the neighborhood. It's a, it's been a developing area around there. This is not an appropriate area for it. Our, our home and our house is substantial. So we, what are we doing with a, with a RV parking, park, our RV storage in the, in the area? The extent to which the suitability on it also is, is a question off of it. Suitability is, in the area is that best, best been put when they had a lady right there came up and talked to the planning commission in Goddard. She turned around and said, "Hey, I can take my RV there anytime, day or night. It's great." We're not operating a 24-hour convenience store there. It shouldn't be. That's what the Ilers complained about was the hearing and the noise and the lights and everything else going on over there at that time. And it doesn't seem like, if, if you grant this, as I said, there's going to be another person, we're going to be back up here again with, with the next one.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, sir. You bet. Thank you for addressing this. I was, is there any questions for Mr. Strelo? I don't see any this, this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up on the list is Mr. Terry Hedinger. And I believe you are the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. So please address us, and if we have any questions, we'll come to you.
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Good morning. Just wanted to say that I have no advertising, no signage, there are no lights, there's nothing that would ever let you know that there's an RV parking lot where I'm at. As you can see from the, the photos, I'm completely surrounded by trees. Even on the north side, I've got a new set of trees that I put up a few years ago. I've been there since 2013, eight years. The, the parking came about from coworkers and friends. It started that way, and it's been completely word of mouth. There's no advertisement, and people have come to me. I've limited it. There, like I said, there's no lighting, there's no sound, there's, there's nothing that disturbs any of the neighbors. I would say that representing all the neighbors in the area is probably not a factual statement. I talked to Ken Wilson last week when he was out mowing, and he just said he was sorry that he was a part of the first hearing a couple months ago, and basically, he said that he's been hit up at least three times to drive with this campaign. Once again, I'm willing to get in compliance based on all the restrictions that this conditional use will put on my property, which is fine. It cuts it down by about 60%. I'll be one-third of what I am today. I, I'm basically here for questions more than anything.
Okay.
So if you've got any questions for me, I'm, I'm more than willing to answer those questions.
Sure. I have a quick question. Could you pull up, could we pull up the map that is kind of the aerial Google map? That's, oh, maybe one of those.
Are you looking for this one?
No. The next, that one. That one. So the subject property, Mr. Hedinger, so that's yours where the blue dot is, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And you mentioned, and I think we're briefed, so you mentioned that you have trees all the way around your property?
Yep. So there's, this is a dirt berm that covers up everything there, because there's a, within this conditional use, there's a screen that I have to abide by, six-foot minimum.
Okay.
And the only open spot would be right here, right here, well, actually, there's a dirt berm there.
Okay.
Probably right there, and then their property's over here.
Okay.
And then this is completely covered. I can't see the E-Lerts at all.
Okay. All right.
They put those trees in when they first moved there. They're probably 30 feet tall.
And on the west side of your property, that's a tree line that goes?
Completely trees, except right here, but my, the new proposed lot is right here.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's, that's my question. Commissioner Cruz, you have a couple more. So if you want to get back at the podium so we can hear, that way we can hear, the public can hear. Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. So is this just going to be open storage? You're not going to have any, any, any buildings that these will sit inside?
No, this is, this is strictly for the 100 by 100-foot lot, yeah.
Okay. And then to the east, I see the, the E-Lerts, and they have a bunch of vehicles, or what's that? I'm just kind of curious as to, in the, the lower right-hand corner, it looks like?
Right. I, I think they've, I've got, I think they've got some storage containers or something, like, you know, box truck containers.
Okay.
Yeah, I was just, it's just their personal property, I believe.
Okay. Okay, that's all my questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for being here today.
You're welcome.
My first question is, again, this started about two years ago. Do you have a, a business filing with the Secretary of State? I've looked for it, I can't find it.
No. No. It, it's under my personal taxes as Terry's storage, so it's just under, I forget what the form is, but it's for rental property. Like, if you had a couple rental houses, you just take it in as income and then acknowledge that income.
All right. That's good. I think for, I asked yesterday, again, I don't think there's any limit on how many vehicles you can store on your property here in the, in the unincorporated part of the county, but I am, I am curious about whether there, these vehicles are, are inoperative. Is there something in the conditional use that says they cannot be inoperative, or that they cannot be maintained in terms of some type of maintenance on these vehicle, again, RVs or boats or whatever, that they can't be, being worked on on them at this property?
Correct.
I guess I'd like to ask whoever.
Yes, sir. One of the conditions is that the vehicles have to be operable, and in terms of the amount of work that can be done, it's very limited for the, in the case of the conditional use that they're asking for, vehicle storage. If they wanted to do more substantial work on it, that would be a different definition under the zoning code.
Well, it's interesting. Let me, let me ask you another question. Is there any type of limit on how many of these could be stored on this property?
He's limited in terms of size, and I believe we had some staff from MABCD who did some quick measurements, and I think it comes out to about 16 RVs, but it, again, would depend on the size of the vehicles, because he's limited to 10,000 square feet for the area for the storage.
So that's part of, part of the conditional use is 10,000 square feet?
That is correct.
And the location of that 10,000 square feet, is it defined anywhere in the conditional use?
He will have to submit a plan that shows that, and he's got a, a draft plan that he has submitted, which is shown here. It's the area in blue.
We just talked about RV and boat storage at a recent meeting. I'm curious about, we'd had a lot of discussion about hazardous waste runoff and how that might impact. There's, there's other issues that came up, I guess. Is there any, any consideration regarding what type of hard surface this has and what type of, you know, drainage concerns there might be?
It does have to be an all-weather surface. We don't, for this one, we don't get into the scale of drainage, but they would have to comply with what it's platted at, which is, there's only a certain amount of, you know, the, most of the runoff has to stay on the property. He has to be able to handle that on his property. So he does have a pond, I believe this is for stormwater?
Yeah.
Okay.
And those details are clarified in the conditional use?
Those are, it's, those would be a condition, the drainage would be a condition of the plat.
Okay.
However, the 10,000 square feet for the storage area, the surfacing in the storage area, that is part of the conditional use.
Okay. I guess back to the, back to the applicant. You, you mentioned there's a couple of holes in your screen. Do you plan on closing those holes, I guess?
Yes, that's part of the, the conditional usage. I've got to fill those.
Okay. But the requirement's only for six foot, so you plan on putting, like, mature trees in there? Are you going to just plant some seedlings, or what's your plan to, to close those holes?
I was going to get with the planning commission what, how, what, what they approve, right, well, not what they approve, what they suggest. I mean, I could plant trees there, but it takes a while to get six foot.
Yeah.
I could put up cedar fence. I mean, I could do things immediate. It, it just depends on what, if it gets approved, and then we go forward from there.
I, I guess I just want to be consistent. We, we spent a long time talking about screening at the previous case, and again, so to the extent that this is actually less than what the previous one required, I guess I'd like to have some clarification as to what is, what is being discussed here on, on this requirement.
Sure. Yes, sir. There, the screening requirement is also in place for this one, so the screening would have, would be required. The applicant will have an opportunity to develop a landscaping plan and a site plan that will show how the property will be consistent and in compliance with those requirements, including the screening. And as the applicant has indicated, it may be through the use of a fence for portions where existing trees don't provide that required screening. It could even be through a combination of it. Maybe one of, he'd want to plant some trees to grow up taller in the future, but have a fence for right now while they're shorter. There's a variety of means that he can use to, to accomplish the required screening.
And dirt berms.
And berms as well.
Yeah. I've got plenty of dirt.
One of the, on the area, area map I'm looking at right now, looks like there's a lagoon right where that blue square is. What's happening with the lagoon?
The lagoon is gone as of last year Oc-, oh, sorry. The lagoon was removed as of last year October. I've put in a, where the yellow is, that's the new septic field that I put in in October. And yes, the properties around there are in, in decent shape, good shape. I mean, I've kept my property up. I'm getting a new roof this week. So everything's improving, nothing's degrading.
I guess my, my final question would be that area in blue, there's no actual perimeter fence or anything around that. It's just, it's just open to the space around it. There's no actual physical boundary on that blue square.
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Hedinger? I don't see any, so thank you for addressing us.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public like to address the commission on this? Don't see any, so with that, we will close the public comment, and we'll bring the discussion back to the, to the bench. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I know this is a difficult case, but I've always been a property rights advocate, and therefore, I move that the board takes the recommended action.
I'll second that. It's been a motion and a second. Any other comments? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a hard one for me. I would just like to, I guess, explain my vote. I, to the extent whether this is needed or not, not needed or not, I know that that really matters to me today. I think that those arguments are, are irrelevant, but I do think that the, that this conditional use, I think, is not, does not fit the, the character of the neighborhood, and so I'm probably going to vote no on this. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you. We'll let, allow the room to clear. Let's take a, let's take a 10-minute break, a recess for 10 minutes. It's 11:00. Is that, what time do we got here? We will return at, at 11:20. We will return at 11:20.[385.18]
Just a broad overview of the relevant area. The 12 properties in question are going to be what's outlined in red. This is the first map. The second map is zoomed in. It gives you some more context for the surrounding area. I would direct your attention to Madison Street, just to the north, how a lot of the relevant areas actually within Derby and it's highlighted as red. And then this third map itself was what we were, was one of the maps that we received from Derby and it illustrates the 11 properties in question. The proposed annexation is of all 11 properties. They range in size from one acre to 13.15 acres. All 11 tracks are adjacent on the north boundary to Madison Avenue. That's also considered as 79th Street. For context, the, one of the major nearby intersections is going to be Rock Road and Madison Avenue. That is approximately half a mile west of the property in question. The relevant portion of Madison Avenue, that which touches the northern boundaries of these properties, it was actually annexed by Derby back in 2007. Sedgwick County Public Works indicates that this proposed annexation would have no impact on their department nor on Rockford Township. All 11 of the properties are currently zoned as rural residential. Nine of the property have uses listed as single-family residential. The remaining two properties have agricultural uses at this time. Metropolitan Area Planning Department has indicated that the proposed annexation area is within Derby's 2035 urban growth area and the proposed annexation is consistent with the Wichita-Sedgwick County Comprehensive Plan. I have reviewed the service plan that Derby provided and in the backup materials, I have given more indication on what that contains. I've also provided some synopsis of the current services that those properties receive versus the proposed services that Derby is going to be providing under the service plan. Further, I have noted in the backup materials that the plan does appear to substantially comply with statutory requirements for what needs to be included in the service plan itself. I can certainly go into more detail later on if that's the will of the board. The Plan Commission will be reviewing the service plan tomorrow to make a determination on the compatibility with the comprehensive plan. The city of Derby itself will be having a public hearing on June 22nd, 2021. They were required to send out notice to the relevant property owners of the hearing itself and the city will actually be making the determination on whether or not to approve the annexation. That's not up to the Board of County Commissioners in this case. I know in certain other circumstances such as island annexations, it is up to the board, but in this case, it's purely within the realm of the city of Derby. Statutorily, there's no requirement that you do anything in relation to this proposed annexation. Resolution 109, 2012 is a local resident, resolution designed for the board to review the service plan and potentially provide feedback now. This will come up in three years. If Derby ultimately approves the annexation, the board will at that time review whether or not the services offered in the service plan were actually provided. So that is why the board is reviewing this now, see if there are any glaring holes, see if there are any concerns that might be potentially addressed before it's actually approved by Derby. The recommended action in this situation would be to receive and file and to also make any additional comments or actions that you believe would be appropriate. Three different approaches I noted in the backup materials would be to additionally either direct the county councillor's office to notify the city of any comments made during this meeting. The second option would be to prepare a resolution incorporating such comments. Or the third option would be to actually send a county representative to the city of Derby's public hearing in order to make comments. With that, I'm happy to stand for questions or comments. It's also my understanding that two representatives from the Derby Planning Department are here today to answer questions as well.
Okay. Thank you, Kirk. I don't see any questions. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't actually have any questions. I also want to just, number one, commend the, the backup material in this is, is the poster child of how to do this. You guys do a tremendous job. I love the data that you include in your, in your service plan. It's, is very well done. I think for any other city in Sedgwick County that is, we consider an annexation should look at this as a boilerplate on how to do it right. This is really incredible. On page 34 of the plan, which is on page 149 of our, of our backup material, you, you list every single thing you can imagine that would tie into a city service and a lot of those things are existing. Some of those things are upon annexation. And I know that you guys have three years to, to comply with this and substantially, I guess, oppress upon us that we, three years from now, we'll, we'll go back and look at this and make sure that you've done exactly what you said you would do. But I know that you, I have, I have faith that you will do that. So I was gonna say that this is a great chart and then go back a couple of pages. On page 31 of the plan, talks about the financial impact of, of, let's say, $100,000 property. Again, all the, all of these are residential property, I guess, essentially residential properties, but for $100,000 property, we can see some shifting of revenue. Rockford Township does lose a little bit, but I did talk with the trustee there and he, he understands and he agrees. To the entire township, it's about a $3,000 impact for the, the existing assessed value of the, of the 11 properties. But they also recognize they don't, they don't actually provide any services to these 11 properties and so it, it's just a reality that needs to be recognized in the, in the tax revenue. Second impact, of course, is the fire district. Let me just point out that we appreciate our, our agreement with, with Derby and they're very good. Their fire department's excellent and considering this is on the east side of Derby, they always get there first. We do, we do respond to structured fires together, but if, if, if they have to send a, a fire response to a property anywhere to the east side of Derby, Derby's very good responding to those and they do a tremendous job. And in fact, I would tell you that I, I have not looked at the data lately, but I believe that Derby responds to more of these, more of these unincorporated calls than, than actually Sedgwick County Fire District does. And so although it's a loss to our district and I, and I'm sad to see that money not go to the fire district, it's also a reality, I think, of, of what Derby's providing to the, to the people living to the east. And so I think this is more than fair. And so, Mr. Chairman, I don't see any other questions or comments, but I'd like to make a, a motion at the appropriate time.
Fine. Make a motion.
Thank you, Chairman. I'd like to make a motion. We've received and filed the, the plan as presented this morning.
I'll second that. Any other comments? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the role.
Commissioner Lopez.
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis.
Aye.
Commissioner Howell.
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz.
Aye.
Chairman Meister.
Aye. Motion carries. And before we move on, I'd like to invite Scott, recognize you, that you've been here all morning and welcome to, back to the Wichita area in Cedric.
Enjoy the drive.
So if you want to, but if you want to say anything, thanks for all you do.
Well, thank you. I appreciate the, the kind words about our service plan. We do, we do take pride in, in good work in Derby and, and what we're doing here is actually implementing a, a long-range annexation plan that the city council adopted back in 2013. So this has been a multiple phase and you'll see a couple more of these over the next couple of years as well.
Okay, Scott. Thanks to your, thanks to you and your city manager and your commission or your council.
Chairman, I'd like to ask Scott also to introduce his guest that's with him today. If that's okay.
Sure. Absolutely. Yes, with me today is Everett Haynes, the Assistant City Planner for, for Derby.
Well, thank you for your service as well. And again, I wanted, actually had one final comment before I made my motion. I forgot to say it now and that is, we don't really have a, as you, as I was presenting, we don't actually have a vote on whether this annexation should or not, should not happen because it's unilateral. We do need to receive and file the plan and again, the plan is, is stellar. So obviously we would receive and file the plan this morning. Makes total sense. Thank you, Chairman.
Well, and, and thank you for recognizing Everett, Everett did all this work, so.
Okay. Thanks again. Good luck with your drive back. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item L, consideration of Prairie Lakes Redevelopment District Tax Increment Financing.
Hello, Brent. Good morning, afternoon, morning.
Good morning, Chairman Meister. Good morning, commissioners. For the record, I'm Brent Shelton, your Deputy Chief Financial Officer. The next item before you will be the consideration of the Prairie Lakes Redevelopment District Tax Increment Financing. Before I start, I just want to recognize some guests that we have today that will address questions if you have any. We have Brett Clark, the City Administrator from Valley Center, Barry Smith, the Assistant City Administrator is also here. Representing the developer, Iron Horse Development, is Tim Austin, a professional engineer, a principal with that company, and Brad Seville, who is also a principal with that organization. So we are pleased to have them join us today and as I said, if we have questions that may need to be addressed to them. I would also be remiss if I didn't say thanks to Kyle Fiedler for all the heavy lifting that he has done. He works side by side with me on these projects and he has done a lot of work to analyze this proposed tax increment finance district. So I thank him for that work. In terms of background, on May 18th of this year, the Valley Center City Council voted unanimously to approve the Prairie Lakes Redevelopment TIF district. It lies generally south and west of 85th Street North and Seneca. Now, once a city adopts a TIF district, that opens a 30-day window within which the county and the school district within which the proposed TIF district reside have 30 days where they can take one of three actions. This morning, you can vote to approve this tax increment financing district. You can vote to deny this tax increment finance district or you could take no action. And if 30 days pass with no action taken, that's de facto approval of that tax increment financing district. Just approving the TIF district doesn't necessarily activate it. As you know, that these have a 20-year lifespan and that 20-year lifespan will begin when a project plan, which is a more detailed proposal for the TIF district, would be presented and approved by a two-thirds majority of the city council. The major purpose for the redevelopment district is to address some significant stormwater drainage issues that are in the eastern part of the city of Valley Center. They lie adjacent to the West Chisholm Creek Drainage, Drainage Area and these drainage issues due to a flood in 2008 and then subsequent placement of, of this, of a majority of this property on the 100-year floodplain have basically stalled the development in this Now, it's anticipated that the project will comprise about 300 single-family residential homes, some additional commercial development. If you look at the map, the platted areas with streets in yellow, those will be residential. In the top corner, the northeast corner of the development, that's proposed for commercial development with the pink area reserved for future development. The area in the middle would be, is a depiction of the use of some of the proposed TIF increment funds that would be used to mitigate some of the floodwater issues in the area. The estimated project costs for this are going to be, for that area in the middle, it would be about $5.6 million, $4 million for the improvements to the floodway, some park and recreational improvements around there to add to the storage for the storm water. And then street improvements in the southwest corner, or I'm sorry, the southeast corner of this on Seneca Street would comprise an additional about $5.6 million, bringing the total project cost to about $11.2 million. So let's speak a little bit about how a TIF district would work. Cities in Kansas are authorized by state statute to establish redevelopment districts and then to employ tax increment financing to stimulate real estate investment in blighted areas. And the statutes spell out definitions for what constitutes blighted areas. Those investments are designed for infrastructure or other public improvements are designed to spur development in an area that otherwise is not developable. The tax revenues that city, county, and school districts are currently receiving in this area are basically frozen for the life of the TIF district. So the money that we are currently receiving from this area, we would continue to receive going forward. As the infrastructure spurs development, valuation increases, we have what's called incremental tax revenue. That money is used to pay for those infrastructure improvements that were necessary to make the development happen. So those incremental taxes, if you will, become a repayment stream of revenue to use to finance those, those improvements. At the end of the TIF district's life, when the improvements have been paid for, the tax base goes up because we've captured and valuations have grown. So now everybody participates in an increased tax base, increased taxes at the end of the life of the TIF. What a TIF district doesn't do is in and of itself increase taxes on property owners within the TIF. Once that, if no improvement or development occurs on my property as a property owner in a TIF, all things being equal, my taxes would remain the same. It's simply a mechanism to divert some of the incremental or additional taxes toward paying for that infrastructure when it is, if it, if it results in development on the property. Because a TIF district is in a specified geographic area that's defined, then any TIF incremental revenues need to be spent within that same TIF district, within that geographic area. So the specific area that we're talking about this morning, as I mentioned before, is bounded on the north by 85th Street, on the east by Seneca. And at its southernmost point in the southwest corner is 77th Street and then it runs along the West Chisholm Creek floodway back to 85th Street. Part of the property that's in here is an area that you'll see coming across here, which is the, an area of drainage floodway that the county maintains. It would be part of the project. This map will show us in a little more detail what makes this project TIF-eligible. One of the definitions of blight in the statutes is that an area is more, is more than 50% in a 100-year floodplain. The red area that you'll see here within the blue boundaries for the TIF district indicate that about 60% of the property is within the 100-year floodplain. If you'll note where the drainage area goes through from east to west in the area, there are a couple of blue dotted lines. That generally denotes where the improvements in that floodway are proposed to take place. And here's a picture in a little more detail of what that might look like. It's basically building a large retention pond, moving dirt from this area to raise the elevation in the other parts of the TIF district or the redevelopment district that would be used for building houses or other, other structures. In 2008, Sedgwick County adopted a policy where we would analyze proposed tax increment finance districts and if it is found that adverse effect, there's adverse effect from the creation of the TIF district to Sedgwick County, that is a basis for the county commission then to deny the creation of the TIF. The five things that we look at are primarily fiscal in nature and so let's just walk through each one of these and look at the analysis. The first one is that the potential loss of tax revenue would hinder the effective future delivery of services. As we mentioned earlier, the current valuations that we have in this area are going to hold steady or be frozen for us. So our tax revenues, which are currently a little less than $400 a year from this area, would, would remain intact. Now, unless the development would occur without the TIF district, by definition, there's really not a loss of tax revenue. If the TIF district is necessary to make the development happen, without the TIF district, we're going to be pretty much flatlined as it is today. But if we consider that it would have happened anyway and we do have a loss of tax revenues, what does that look like in terms of delivery of public service? Now, this TIF's a little bit unique from what we've seen in the past. This is primarily residential. Most of the TIFs that we've looked at in the past have been a mix of commercial or retail type development. So what does it look like to the big three public services that we deliver in terms of public safety? Law enforcement, fire protection, and then emergency medical services because we're talking about residents here. First of all, Valley Center does have its own police department, so we're not necessarily going to be a first responder. We may show up, the sheriff's office might, to a call. They're not part of the fire district, so again, we don't see a big impact there. And if EMS responds to one of these residences, that's a billable service if they transport someone for medical care. Kyle visited with the, with representatives from those three agencies and none of them felt like this would provide any more than kind of a de minimis effect on our delivery of, of public service. The absorption rates didn't seem to be anything that would create a strain on those resources. And we're, we're talking about 300 houses. We're not talking necessarily about 300 times four people per household or 1,200 new residents to the county. A lot of the folks that will occupy these houses are already here, already receiving these services. The second thing that we look at is our but-for question. Would this project happen but for the TIF? Is it economically feasible without county funding support? We looked at this two ways, one from a macro level and one from a micro level. At the macro level, it's an $11.2 million project. If the city would try to do this on their own, they're going to fall about $7.4 million short in terms of the revenues that this development would create over the life of the, over that 20-year period that we've talked about. With the county and the school district's support, funding support with this, we're reaching a break-even point at somewhere around 15 to 18 years, just depending on the speed of the, of the development. Now, the county will provide about $3.9 million in incremental tax revenues over a 20-year period and that would, that helps to close that gap and then put it in a, in a positive, positive increment as we go forward. If we looked at it at a micro level, we're talking about an $11.2 million project. So what other funding mechanisms might be there? Special assessments are probably not going to be a feasible or a suitable approach to this because this is more of a regional solution. It's not a solving problems for each individual or only for those residents. And that $11.2 million would add about $37,000 to each of these lots. That with the other special assessments that they're going to be levying for streets and so forth would probably render the lots unsellable or unmarketable because of the So this graph just depicts for us, the blue line shows how much city revenues would, would be generated. The yellow line shows the debt service payment and with the TIF, we see a break-even point at about year nine and then the accumulative revenues make up for that going forward. Is there enough developer skin in the game to make sure that we have a developer that's going to stick with this and, and make it happen? To date, I think the developers spend about $100,000 in terms of studies for surveys, engineering fees and so forth. The initial phase of this project, which is that drainage project and the land acquisition are being guaranteed 100% by the developer and I understand from the city that it's being secured with a $5 million letter of credit in favor of the city. So the developer has a lot of skin in the game at that point. And then we also realize that special assessments will be spread on these lots as they're being planted, which until sold, the developer's going to be on the hook for those. So they're taking on a lot of obligation. We feel like they do have skin in the game sufficient to affect that default risk. The fourth thing we look at are whether or not the costs to the county government are greater than the benefits to the county government. If you remember earlier, we're currently receiving about $400 a year in taxes. We don't see a strain on county resources to provide services to the area as it develops. The county's participation in the TIF at about $3.9 million would generate at the conclusion of the TIF about $322,000 in revenues to the county when the TIF closes. So even if we consider that the $3.9 million is lost revenue, we're about 10 to 12 years after the TIF closes that we're, that we've made that money back and substantially increased the tax base in our revenues. And finally, we just want to make sure that we had enough data to sufficiently analyze this and I would commend the, the representatives both from the developer and from the city in providing us information on a timely basis. We were involved in the project at a very early stage last winter, beginning to hear about the proposal and, and worked toward the potential TIF district. So we did receive adequate, adequate time to review the proposal. So basically, my recommendation is that we have not found adverse fiscal effect to Sedgwick County as a result of this TIF district and I would recommend approval of the resolution that consents to the city of Valley Center's establishment of the Prairie Lakes Redevelopment District Tax Increment Financing. I'll now stand for questions.
Okay. This is a new business item, so we will, if there's any questions or we can hold them and, and accept public comment. So I don't see any questions right now, Brent.
Okay.
So thanks for the presentation. Well explained.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll open it up for public comment. Does anybody from the audience want to address the commission? At this point, I don't see any. So okay, we will close the public comment and bring that discussion back to the bench. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, TIF districts, I'm generally not opposed to. I, I just have a couple of questions about this one, though. You show a floodplain map on one of your earlier slides. That's the current floodplain map. After all the improvements, do you have an analysis of the floodplain?
Let me defer to Jim Weber, who's much more versed in this area than me and can, can speak to that.
And while Jim's coming up, can I just, for the record, I have had a ex parte brief conversation with the developer about this project, but very brief, but it's not affecting my vote. So thank you.
I too have had ex parte contact and am keeping my open, an open mind regarding this project.
Good. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. Curiously, from the councillor, councillor's perspective, is this a quasi-judicial item
You know, I'm, I'm not sure that it is in the sense of a zoning matter, Commissioner.
I, I'm not sure we even, even need to disclose whether we have ex parte communications. I don't think this is a quasi-judicial matter, so I've not had communication with anybody but, for the record, but I don't know if we need to disclose it either way. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Right. We will pursue. Jim, thanks for coming to join us.
Okay. Jim Weber, Director of Public Works, and just have a couple of things we can walk through here and maybe a little more than what Commissioner Dennis actually asked, but floodplanes are a little bit tricky, so we'll spend a little time on it. This, in the handout you have, so in this map, the red is what we call the 100-year floodplain of the base flood elevation. You see the BFE on there. And so just for reference, I've shown the BFE in this northern portion is at 1347. South of the, this is the Trail View Slough running through here, if you can see the mouse. South of the slough, it's also 1347. And if you go, there's a little kind of a blockage here, but below that, in the southern development portion, it's 1345. And so what I've done, you can't see all the contours, but I did go in to try to get some idea how much fill we're needing to do to get it out of the floodplain. And you see the ones running across diagonally here. That's about one foot of fill is what's required in that area. And so down here with the twos, that's about two foot of fill and down here in this very corner, that's about three. And on the south side of the slough, it's also runs about one foot of fill as required to do that. That's pretty minimal. Some of it's a little bit deeper, but the deeper parts have all, as it turns out, are all in this area between the two blue dash lines, which is going to be this reserve area for the drainage and, and the park-type facilities. The piece that we're involved in right now, in the middle, you see the two blue lines The piece that we're involved in right now, in the middle, you see the two blue lines that are kind of following this crosshatched area. So that's actually county right away for flood control purposes. That's along with this west branch of Chisholm Creek, which runs north-south. That's all under maintenance by flood control, which we're paying 50% of. We don't do it directly. So that's kind of, I think what I would say here is that the goal is that they need a pretty good amount of dirt to fill up the properties, adjacent properties. We have a, what we'll call a spoil bank, maybe, or a training levy. It's not a full certified levy up here on both sides of Trails View and up here. And so we'd be trying to take advantage of the storage that they're going to, to get the dirt they need, they're going to put a really big, it's going to look like a bowl, I think, with these amenities down in it, in this area. This is about 53 acres, they're saying. And so I think the fill here is minimal. The homes that get built, their foundations and footings are going to be in virgin soil. It's going to be, it's going to be good. I think it's worth doing. The other thing I'm going to jump to, go down on this slide. So we did do, the county through the Stormwater Management Advisory Board finished up a study of this whole basin in 2016. So this red rectangle in here is approximate location of this TIF site. It's a pretty big basin. That north end of it is 117th Street. That's a mile south of the Harvey County line to the north of us. And the south end of this is about 45th Street. It's almost coming into the north junction. It's a pretty big area. The study, we did two studies. One of them, Commissioner Howell's, where he was down at Spring Creek. But these were kind of test runs to see what we could find out in studies and maybe guide what we do in the future. In this one, we have kind of high ground to the east over towards, part of this is in Park City, part is in Valley Center, part is in Wichita, part is unincorporated, part of the county. And you get down here in the, kind of to the left of this thing, and it's low, flat, and drains slowly. And so the result of that 2016 study was a list of recommendations, things you could do in here to help with flooding and also dealt with stormwater quality. And coincidentally, the number one thing on that list was to build this pond. So the red on this map is, again, where that park-like area goes. And this blue crosshatched area is about 75 acres in size. And that would be a theory where somebody, if we had that funding, would go in and buy this 160 acres of property or whatever, and dig this big hole and make the dirt disappear and build a pond. And so I think the important part of this is that if this development happens, that's kind of, I don't care whether it's a TIF or not, but if this development happens and somebody has found a way to move this pond from the blue crosshatched area to a smaller one in this area they're showing, get that hole dug, fill up the adjacent ground, and provide more storage than exists today, then there's an additional public benefit that, you know, nobody spends anything on outside of just getting this development done. And so those are kind of, this is a little bit like the Dry Creek Detention Basin out west, where that's anticipated. The advantage of that one is we'd get dirt out of the pond, we'd help the drainage problem, but we'd use the dirt to build the northwest bypass. And so this is a second kind of beneficial use or benefit of having this done, which is probably longer than anticipated, but that's something you need to know.
Well, to go along with that question, are these homes going to have basements?
They can answer that question, but it's typical around here to do basements. I would say to get them out of the floodplain, they're going to have to come up to the 100, the base flood elevation, so that 1347. And once it's out of the floodplain, then the floodplain regulations kind of don't tell you how far you have to be above that. But, you know, Tim Austin and his people, they understand how this works, and Valley Center has a very good city engineer. And so we'd be looking at them to create drainage plans and lot grading plans and things that get them maybe a couple of feet above that base flood elevation so that they don't have any trouble later. There would be no levy left here, I don't think, which is a good thing. I'd prefer the fill to the levy, but I just need to be prudent about it. Once you do that, I think they're going to have basements. I don't think, they've done development down here. You see this lighter area that's already been developed. And they can answer the question. I'm not aware of a groundwater problem that they're going to get into here, for example. It's just a matter of getting the lowest opening into the house high enough that if the, you see some of the, maybe not in this much, this purp, or pinkish color is the 500-year floodplain. And so it's really not, I don't think it's too bad down. I think it's very doable, even with basements. And people like view up basements and things a little bit higher, but...
Well, the reason for my questions is, first of all, down in Commissioner Lopez's district, we're fighting basement problems right now, and the commission allowed those to be built. And now we're trying to find a solution to it. And I don't want a future commission to say, hey, what did these folks do back in 2021 and didn't think about basements flooding? The second issue that I've got that I'm always concerned about, if you remember the Halloween flood that we had in 98, the Dell, Breezy Point, Rainbow Lakes, they were all built up a foot above the floodplain so that they could build those houses. And lo and behold, Halloween flood came, and we filled up all the basements. So again, I don't want us to come, somebody to come back 20 years from now and say, hey, what did the commission do back in 2021 that allowed this to happen? How are you going to fix it? So I've just got concerns about building in a floodplain, especially if we're building in a floodplain and putting basements in. That's really the issue that I've got. Thank you.
Commissioner Lopez.
Can you explain the difference between this and my district, since mine is groundwater problems and this is storm water, if that's, if I'm understanding correctly? Can you explain why that would be different from the two districts?
Well, it really depends on the geology of the area and where the actual groundwater table lies. And down, unfortunately, down in the second district along the river, it's very close to the surface. This, and I think, you know, they're doing the engineering, not me, but I think it would be prudent for them to, you know, check it out, make sure they know where the groundwater table is. You should always do that, for example. But this one, we're just not aware of problems up here like that. I'm not saying they aren't, but it's kind of, you can't see the contours, but this has just got a couple of feet of drop across this whole thing. But right here, we see this housing start in just east of the blue line. This thing starts uphill like a rocket. It's going, you know, it's 30 feet and a half mile to get up to the top of the hill. So it's not, it's just, I don't think it's, the geology is the same as what you're dealing with. Now, there could be places up here along the river, closer to the Big Ark River, where you could get into that. But I'm not aware that this is a problem. But again, they need to do due diligence. It's in the city limits of Valley Center now. It's going to be, I mean, I guess I would say to you, we're not really responsible for what they do with it. And it's good they hear this conversation because I would like to see them maximize the storage in this park area. And I'd like to see them make sure that, because it is adjacent to some stuff that we're maintaining with the city Wichita flood control, that they get these houses up enough that if the bigger than the 100-year storm comes, that it not right into the basement. But they're smart people, so I think they can do it.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This may not be for you, Jim, but you can stand there and we'll see who the questions go to.
I'll take the hit and we'll see what happens.
All right. Thank you. So this is a little bit different than other TIFs that we've had in the past. In fact, I don't know we've ever had a TIF for a residential area. Can someone please confirm that? I guess, I guess we did have one, the older children's home down on the river, just happened recently. There was like 30 or so homes. Can you please clarify that?
Yeah, there's a, the most recent TIF district prior to this one was in the Riverside area. I think it's 40 townhomes on the side around 13th and McLean or 13th and Amity area, south of the bridge. But that was, and it, the incremental revenues there would be used to improve streetscape and walkways along the river, down and kind of connecting into the museum area.
And that was, that was the first one that we know of?
Right. Others have had some residential components, but primarily were commercial or retail.
Okay. And the applicant hasn't spoken yet, that I'm aware of. But I am curious about, again, 40% of this apparently is not in the floodplain, and 60% is in the floodplain. Am I right in my understanding of that? 40%, 40/60 split?
Roughly 60/40, right.
Could they develop in the 40% if they wanted to without doing all of this improvement?
If you look at the map, up on the top northeast corner would be the area that's out of the 100-year floodplain, and then the area just south of, anything that's not red or pink, I think, is outside of the floodplain.
Okay. This is a good question for you. Let me ask a question. So you talked about the city is about $7 million short, and 3.9 of that will come from the county. But this also impacts the school district, USD 262. And by my calculations, it looks like if we're going to give up 3.9, they're going to give up 5.1. That's much more than 7 million. Can you, can you explain why it's much more than 7 million that's necessary for this to work?
It's about an $11 million project, but there will be debt financing. So those, there's interest costs along with that. So those payments for debt service, it makes it more than $11 million. So then these are incremental revenues over time.
Let's talk about the South Fork for just a moment. So the South Fork TIF, there was bonds on that. Are those bonds being paid, and who's paying those bonds?
There have been some delinquencies in that area, and it's my understanding that those have been, have been or are being cleared up to the extent that there are deficiencies in the amount of incremental tax and the amount that's needed to surface that debt. The city, and in some cases, they've made agreements with the developer to make up that shortfall. The county does not.
But I guess, to be clear, the city is actually paying some of the, some of the cost of these bonds through, I guess, through general taxes.
Right. It's their responsibility to do so.
That wasn't the plan initially. Initially, the plan was the city would be revenue neutral, or they would potentially get tax revenue once the TIF expired, but during the process of the TIF, there would not be any liability to the city. That was the plan initially. Is that correct?
Typically, that's the case. You may see shortfall in the early years of a TIF district. Sometimes the bonds don't get issued two or three years in when the revenues are there to support those payments. So they're all a little bit different, but the cities don't want to be making up those shortfalls.
Okay. This being Valley Center, and I'm also looking at areas that are mostly unincorporated today, I guess. These, this whole area is not currently inside the city. Is that correct?
It is all inside the city, yes.
It is all inside the city, yes. Okay. Do they pay fire district taxes?
No, it's not part of the Central County Fire District.
Okay. They have their, oh, okay. I should know that, but I just wanted to clarify. I agree with Commissioner Dennis. I am concerned about the basements. Again, this has been a significant problem for homeowners that did not realize they had issues. And again, this may not be subsurface water, but to the extent that we have basements in a 100-year floodplain, that just sounds wrong to me. So I have some great concerns about the plan of doing basements in an area that has a history of flooding. Even if you raise it one or two feet, I don't know that's enough to make me feel comfortable about seeing basements going there. But that's not today's discussion. But I guess, to my concern, how do we protect this concern? If we were to approve this today, how do I alleviate my concern about having basements in this area?
I think to Jim's point, the city engineer and the city staff working with the developer to approve plans that make sense within the area. Also, once this retention basin and so forth are completed and that extra storage for water is made available, FEMA comes back in and takes a look at that. It's my understanding that they redrew the maps in 2016 after a significant water event. So it wasn't originally in the floodplain and then was put in after. And I think it just, water just kind of sits there, it's pretty muddy, I would guess, right now with the rains we have.
Did the applicant recently purchase this property for the purposes of, purpose of development? Do we know?
The last that I knew it was, they had an option to purchase it. Don't know if that purchase has actually transpired.
Okay, very good. This, again, most of the TIF districts we've had in the past, again, they're immediate blight. I don't know that I agree with the definition in this case that this is blight. I think we have to understand, by the way, by getting all of this property out of the floodplain, the water has to have a place to go. And I guess, has Scott Lindbeck looked at this, and we're confident that the retention ponds, as described, can handle the amount of surface runoff for this entire area?
Let me have Jim speak to that.
So I would just say that we haven't seen an in-depth analysis. What I'm showing you is conceptually how this should work out. There's, depends on Valley Center's stormwater requirements, but they need to account for, I think, runoff that's going to come from the new impervious area that they're going to build. They got to have at least as much storage as there today, and then the goal would be to get more than that. And...
All right. I have another question for Brent. Can you confirm that all of the revenue for this, from this TIF, that none of this will go to what I consider to be normal special assessment things that would be provided by residential lots? In other words, paving, gutters, storm sewers, fire hydrants, street lighting, utilities, all that would be paid for through special assessment taxes that are levied to each property owner?
That is correct.
But here's the value to the property owner. So to the extent that you would have to improve this, improve the area, either that's going to be paid for by redirecting, if you will, county and school tax dollars to pay for these things, or it would have to be paid through special assessment taxes on top of the other special assessment taxes these property owners would have to pay anyway?
Right. The TIF vehicle will allow a natural increase in assessed valuation due to the development, and the majority of those taxes would go to the fund, those TIF-eligible infrastructure improvements.
Just for the record, I have, I have supported nearly, I think, virtually perhaps every, I have to go back and look at my record, but I think every TIF that's come across the bench here, I think I've supported every one of them. So I want to be on record saying that I'm not anti-TIF, okay? I want to, I want to support things that make sense. I have some concerns about this one. I have some questions for the applicant if and when he wants to come to the podium, but I, I'll just clarify, it looks to me like, again, I don't know whether or not there's any bond issues for the school out there, but roughly a little more than $5 million will be redirected from the schools for this as well. I guess I'm, this is a, this is a rabbit, a rabbit trail from, from the purpose of why we're here today. But I do think it would be, it would be ideal if, again, Valley Center could always redirect their tax revenue to do anything they want to do within their city. That's the right, that's the right to do that. So this TIF really isn't about their revenue. It's really more about the county's revenue and the schools' revenue. And I don't think that schools have ever even met on this. I think by default, they just simply let them go forward. I don't think they even met on, I doubt they met on this one. Did they?
Historically, the school districts, and most of them have been in the Wichita School District, have deferred to our analysis on the proposed TIF districts. We did receive a letter of, a copy of a letter of support from the Valley Center School Superintendent. Because of the growth in that school district, they're the fastest-growing school district in the county, they don't have enough housing to support the number of students, the growth that they're currently experiencing. So they indicated that they were supportive of this TIF district.
So what this means then, assuming that there's 300 homes, and I'm just going to spitball and say it's probably 1,000 people, maybe possibly more that would probably be living in this area. These folks are not invested in providing the same county services that everybody else in this entire county is paying for. Essentially, those dollars are going to be paying for the improvements that improves the area that they live in, but it doesn't necessarily pay for the services that Central County provides to every other citizen. So there's a fairness issue to this. And again, I know that there's this other one by the Riverside area, but I think this is precedent-setting, and I'm concerned about doing housing developments with TIF districts. I don't know that this is good, good policy for us to, on this path. I don't know this is, I have some concerns about it. I have some, again, I have some questions for the applicant if and when he comes to the podium, but for right now, I'm just, I'm a little bit concerned about this one. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. I'd like to address a few concerns of my fellow commissioner. Who can tell us, who determines the definition of blight?
It's spelled out in statute. And the, there is a specific, I think it's in 121770A, Section 3 says if it's more than, the majority of the property is in the 100-year floodplain, it's considered blighted.
Okay. So specifically, who determines that? Is that our state legislators? Is that a federal delegation? Who determines that?
State legislature.
Okay. So I've heard repeatedly that Commissioner Howell respects our state legislatures, so I will, I will defer to them on what the definition of blight is. To the issue of the school board, I did print out the letter that was discussed just a second ago and laid it on your... second ago and, and laid it on your, your chair there. And I'd, I'd just like to read it if, if you'll allow me that time. This is from Corey Gibson, Dr. Corey Gibson. He is the superintendent of Valley Center Schools, USD 262. I serve as the proud superintendent of Valley Center Unified School District Number 262, which is the largest employer in Valley Center, Kansas. This letter is being written in conjunction with the request, request to establish a tax increment financing, financing district within the city of Valley Center. Although most school districts in Kansas are experiencing a decline in the number of students they serve, we are one of the fastest growing school districts, percent enrollment growth over five years in the Wichita metropolitan area. The following illustrates the changes in enrollment within Sedgwick County Public School Districts over the course of the previous five years. And it notes that Valley Center is the highest, has the highest growth of percentage at point nine, or 9.3%. The next one in line is Goddard at 7.3%. So that's pretty significant over the last five years. Unlike almost every district in our state, USD 262 is a closed boundary district. We do not open enrollments, enroll students from outside of the 83 square miles that make up our district. Several realtors have a waiting list of people attempting to purchase a home within our district, frequently citing the location and connection to our schools. Many of our 550 employees are actively seeking a home within the district's boundaries, but are unable to do so due to lack of housing options. For these reasons, we support additional housing in our district. Currently, within our district boundaries, that includes all of Valley Center and parts of Kichai, Park City, and Wichita, there are several million dollars of tax abated and tax exempted properties. The vast majority are associated with businesses and warehouses that are currently tax abated in Park City. The district has not protested any of these abatements exemptions, and for that reason, I do not believe the district will protest this project. So I think that's important when we talk about lost revenue from the school district. So in regards to flooding, I had a, had a basement. I live quite close to Valley Center. And during 2019, when we had a lot of the floods, it was seepage from being close to a water table. You know, Mother Nature can sometimes be testy. And so the Halloween flood, the flood of 2019, those are anomalies, not regularities. And so I'd like to just point out that we can't control what happens with rain and so, but we can do our best to mitigate that. And I, and I want to invite Tim and Brad, if you guys would like to come up. And I also, for, real quick, I'd like to acknowledge Brent Clark, who is the city administrator here. So he, he will be able to answer some questions as well. But that, so let's talk about that real quick. Tim, if you want to come up.
Good morning, good afternoon, Commissioner. So thank, thank you for allowing me to be here today. Be happy to answer any questions. Tim Austin, for the record, with Iron Horse Development.
So let's just address the basement concern.
Okay. So that, that was a great question. Commissioner Lopez and Commissioner Dennis both asked about that. Groundwater in this location is typically about 15 feet in depth based on water, water well logs. So typically, we're not going to experience it. As, as you can see on the map, there are some existing homes that have already been developed in that Prairie Lakes addition, and they don't have any groundwater issues. So I would not expect that to be the case. And unfortunately, in your, your district down there, high groundwater is just something we have to deal with.
Okay. So you are going, you are, the, the plans are to build basements?
Yeah. So, so the, the typical deal to Commissioner Dennis's question about developing in the floodplain or near the floodplain, the typical desire for the consumers in the marketplace are the view out lots. And so view outs, typically you have about four foot of basement and everything's up above that. And in the way the floodplain rules govern today for building permits, in Jim's, Weber's analysis or his slide there where it shows the base flood elevation at 1347, the lowest opening that we could have based on that BFE is at 1349. So we have to have two foot of, two foot of additional clearance. And so actually, in order to develop those properties, we would need more than one foot. Every, every number that he's shown there, we would actually have to add two feet. So there's considerably more fill that needs to be developed. And it's not dissimilar to any project. Commissioner Dennis, you asked about questions and concerns over, from your time on the city council and West Side, places like Lake Ridge or North Ridge, Breezy Point, many neighborhoods I know you're quite familiar with, those are all developed adjacent to the floodplain. So, you know, as a development community, as a regulatory community between the county and the city, we're very experienced, very practiced in dealing with those. And so looking at this as, as an engineer and actually studied this while I was still doing consulting engineering, I think we understand, you know, the things that need to be done to make this a viable project from a housing standpoint. Well-founded concerns, but through practice, I think in this community, we experience, we know how to take care of those issues.
Why did you select this? It seems like you have a lot of skin in this game. Why this area?
Yeah. So when I was, recently I was with Call Valley Engineering as a consulting engineer, and I've been, been practicing civil engineering for almost 35 years, I guess, getting a little long in the tooth, but I like to say long in the hair, but just long in the tooth for my case. But over the years, looked at a lot of different projects. That, that's why people come to consulting engineers, try to figure out, you know, what challenges are there to a property? What are, what are the unique issues? And evaluating this property in my consulting role, I looked at it, it was really clear that this problem was suffering from some stigma from having been flooded in 2008. And that's, I'm not sure that was in your staff report, but this property got flooded in 2008, and prior to 2016, it wasn't even in the map floodplain. And so when I look at the Prairie Lakes addition, it was platted and developed by a different developer, platted by a different engineering firm. The elevation, for example, the lowest opening elevation when it was platted is actually now four feet lower than what would be required today from a building permit standpoint. So as, as an engineer evaluating it, looking at the project feasibility, this land has to have four, four feet of fill more than what it did when it was platted in 2002. And so that affects the economic viability. The other part is just from the 2008 storm event which flooded this, there was resulting lawsuits, it was tied up in litigation from 2008 to almost 2014, at least as I can understand from the record before that was resolved. And so in the development community, this, this project's been stigmatized. It's got issues, it's got economic issues, it's got floodplain issues. The 2016 study that Jim alluded to, that the county paid for and that identified some of the drainage challenges was something that I wasn't aware of until after we'd already done our own independent studies and reached the same conclusions, that there was an opportunity here to maybe address really some broad community concerns. And so Commissioner Howell, you asked about for the developer, this is a developer-driven project, and certainly we would recognize that the developer could benefit from it. But I think the thing that's being lost in some of the discussion is the benefit to the community as a whole for creating this regional detention basin. Commissioner Dennis, over on the west side of town, we have Cadillac Lake, which but for Cadillac Lake, some of those rainfall events would have flooded Chadsworth addition and some of those residential neighborhoods around Cadillac Lake. And so similar thing here, prior to 2016, if you look at the slide again, you see areas of red that are on the west side of that drainage ditch. Prior to 16, those, those properties weren't in the floodplain, and they got flooded in '08. So the regional detention is, is really a significant community benefit. That's why I think it makes sense. It's really the only way to make this whole property be viable. Kind of as a rule of thumb from a development standpoint, to give you an example, typically we, as engineers going in and looking at, we might look between 5 and 10% set aside for detention ponds. So the north quarter section's 133 acres. So typically, if I were looking at it just as a straight up deal, we would set aside maybe somewhere between six and 13 acres for detention. But in this case, there's a 52 acre detention. And so you're getting four times greater benefit, four times extra cost that goes into creating that benefit, which the developer can't sustain. So absent any kind of capital improvement financing that's been identified by the city or the county, there's no mechanism to drive, to address and solve these drainage problems that the greater community has. And so this TIF is, is unique. I appreciate the complexity of it, but it really makes sense because the vast majority of benefit here is actually public benefit.
Thank you, Tim. I think that's all the questions I have for you. I'd like to invite Brent up to tell us kind of what this means for the city of Valley Center. Brent Clark, excuse me.
Yeah. So you got to be more specific when you, you know, somebody Brent's in the room. Good afternoon, Commissioner Brent Clark, the proud city administrator in Valley Center. You know, this project is really going to be a game changer for Valley Center. This is a massive development project, and we're really excited for it. The mayor and council are extremely impressed with Iron Horse Development. And what the plans are that Tim and Brad, along with Kevin, have presented to the city council, this isn't just residential either. You know, there is a 15 and a half acre section that'll be used for commercial. That's one of the things that we don't have in Valley Center much of right now. As you know, and seen in the press, Leakers, the old Leakers building, recently sold to Builders First Source, and they're going to be consolidating all their Wichita operations to Valley Center. That was really our only commercial area in our community. And so this on a major road and corridor will be essential for development as well as residential. Everybody knows, you know, we have a housing crisis, you know, not just in Valley Center, but the entire county. We have not done a good job with building homes for the future. And so we're playing catch-up, actually beyond catch-up, to try to make up those additional homes. In this area, this is one part of actually three subdivisions that will be happening to the east of this as well. And so last month, we announced over 430 new residential subdivision lots. And a lot of it has to do with the same drainage when it comes to this area. So I think with looking at this and really commend Jim Weber and his entire staff and the county for partnering really with, with Valley Center, making sure that all the drainage in this entire area actually is more cohesive and flows in the, in the way that we want it to, to the best of our ability. So it's going to improve this entire area. I live over in Fiddler's Creek, right over to the east of this location. And even with the past rainy events, you could look down the rows of corn and, and see all the water sitting on that property. So I think this is a great private-public partnership. And of course, I came from Nebraska, and TIF is one of those tools that we use for housing left and right. And so I think it's key for us as community leaders to look at every tool in our toolbox when it comes to development. Also in Valley Center, we have a lot of infrastructure projects coming up. I know a lot of you sit on, you know, WAMPO, of course, on our WAMPO boards and TAC and TIP and TIB, and I'm still learning all the acronyms, sorry. And, and we have a lot of infrastructure projects happening in Valley Center. And so but for TIF, all this project in the Iron Horse area would not occur. And so kind of stand for any questions and appreciate, of course, our partnership on Ford Street or 77th, along with Park City and all the collaboration that we've done over the last 18 months.
Thank you, Brent, for that. What was the vote of your council?
It was 8-0.
Okay. So eight, eight approvals, right.
Yep. No opposition.
Great. I appreciate that. Thank you so much. You know, with that, here, here's kind of where I'm at with this. Because of the regional detention that it will solve with water, the no adverse financial effects to the county, the no additional resource strain on our county resources, the additional increase of the revenue, tax revenue that will be close to $325,000 additional dollars, and really just the development that will happen, the private development of single family housing, commercial facilities, all the public infrastructure improvements, the park and recreation facilities, the improvements to Seneca Street. I think this is, this is a really great thing for Valley Center, and I'd like to make a motion to approve the TIF district.
Okay. I'll second that. There's a motion and a second. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Chairman. This actually might be for you as well. Thank you for being here today. I am.
Thanks for having me.
Yeah. I, I think he, he mentioned this very quickly, so I'd like to clarify, does Valley Center have a comprehensive plan?
Yes.
And what is this land shown as in that comprehensive plan?
Um, I'm not 100% sure. I'm pretty sure residential for the most part. I'd have to look back. It was an old comprehensive plan that was identified 2014. It's probably more updated in our existing land use map and future land use map, actually. When, of course, this past summer, we went through and changed our area of influence map that you all approved as well. And I'd have to look back to know exactly what this property is identified as, but I'm pretty sure residential.
All right. Then that's my only question for you, but I have a question, a couple of questions for Brent again.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. So just, thank you for, again, thank you for taking questions here. I'm, I'm looking back at some of our TIF history. Do we have examples? I mean, I don't know how far we go back with, with history of approving TIF districts, but do you have an idea how long ago? These are typically 20-year agreements, correct?
Correct. And we've got data going back to the first, which was a tax decrement district in 1993.
In terms of the TIFs that have been approved, have quite a few of those come back on the tax rolls? I mean, I don't really have a, a sense of that. I'd kind of know they have. Okay.
Yeah. We've got a handful.
On this one, if they, if there's revenue left over and they decided to amend the project plan, it does reset the TIF back to the beginning. So they have another 20 years at that point. Is that correct?
It is, except in this case, we've been told that the project plan will cover the entire TIF district. So that will limit them to 20 years.
Okay. That's good to know that. All right. Very good. I guess I have a couple of questions for, for Brad Seville, if he's willing to take a couple of questions. Thank you for being here today. I am, I'm, I did a little bit of research trying to find out about the Iron Horse Development LLC. And I see this was basically filed, I guess it was formed last October. Was this formed specifically for this project?
No, it wasn't. We, we've been down in Old Town for about 25 years and outgrew our current space. We renovated another building next door at 142, and we moved several of our staff into that. So we've been getting more involved in development, different retail and different development out of state and different places. And so we hired three engineers and some site selection people, and we've started a new venture. So no, this, it was not created for this. We're doing dollar store, dollar store projects and restaurant projects. And so this is, this is another project for us, yet this one is, is a challenge. So.
I see. Okay. Again, so just Secretary of State's filing just shows data formation was October the 14th of 2020. So it raised a concern in my, in my mind. I know you're very busy. You're very, you're very busy developer and you do a lot of things in this community. So there's no question that you have a lot of activities out there. I was just questioning about this particular specific company, if it was, again, according to Secretary of State, founded, formed in October, October of 2020.
Yeah. No, come over and visit, but we're, we're working on maybe 25 projects at the moment throughout the Midwest.
Okay. Very good. And just to, something I also noticed is more of just information against to you, but your current mailing address, 156 North Emporium, it doesn't even show up on GIS. But I assume that you are using one of the other adjacent buildings, I guess, for mailing, but this is actually apparently incorrect for your filing. You might want to.
Okay. So 156 is Landmark Commercial Real Estate, and 142 is the building we leased next door. And we've been renovating it in the early months, couldn't accept a mail there because it was under renovation. It hadn't been occupied for like 20 years. So we'll look into that.
Thank you. I understand there's some type of insurance clause on these bonds. Can you, can you describe what that is? I was listening to the city council on this. I think they talked about some type of a, some type of guarantee or some, something about these bonds that said that if the project was not to be successful, that there's a way that the city would be held harmless. Am I?
Insurance?
Yeah. I listened to the Valley Center. They had two, two public, two council meetings, and I think this was discussed there. and I think this was discussed. I don't know exactly what they're talking about.
You know, you might, you might be referring to the certain portions of the project, we may be guaranteed with a letter of credit that can be called upon if there's a default. I'm not sure about what insurance you're referring to.
I guess maybe I used the wrong term there. It's a letter of credit, it sounds like, then.
Yeah. What it means that as a developer, we have to purchase a letter of credit to guarantee the performance of the bonds. And those are in place, similar to what you would do for specials, for residential developers, that have to put up a letter of credit for 35% of the project for specials. So very similar. And then, and then as the benchmarks are completed, and a certain number of houses are built, then those are re-leased.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I think that's all my questions for you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you. Brent, would you mind coming back up here? I think, I'm not sure if you were able to get the answer to the questions around the comprehensive plan or not, but perhaps you had the time to get that?
Yes. Commissioner Howell, it is 100% single-family residential is what that is plotted for.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. And then also, for any, you know, bond, question, or those things, our Assistant City Administrator Barry Smith is a guru when it comes to his spreadsheets, and done a tremendous amount of research on any of those financial questions, if you so choose to hear. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. I just, I think, I think we're about to vote. So I wanted to go ahead and just share my thoughts on this. I certainly want to be supportive of developers and ideas that are out there. I'll continue to be concerned about the precedent that this creates. I don't know that if another one of these comes up, it's a housing district that I would want to continue doing this. But I also do support the idea of constitutional home rule. And to the extent that Valley Center, I think, has got the biggest risk here, I don't know that the county has a lot of risk, but there is a potential for some benefit to county in 20 years. And I think that this is better in terms of, it sounds like there's not really a reset opportunity for the TIF. I mean, that's encouraging. There's no, there's no hit to the fire district. The schools actually spoke up in this case, which is unusual, but they did speak up in support of it. Obviously, I did watch the Valley Center meetings, and both those meetings had unanimous votes in support of this. Again, so I will continue to be concerned, but I guess I will support the motion today. Thank you.
Okay. Been a motion and a second. I don't see any other comments. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody, for your contributions and your comments. So good luck with the development. And our friends in Valley Center, thank you, and continue on. Good stuff.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
It does, doesn't it?
Madam Clerk, please call the next item, please.
Item M, Report of the Board of Bids and Contracts' Regular Meeting on May 27, 2021.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Hi, Joe.
Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director, the meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts, the regular meeting of May 27. We have two items to present to you. Item number one is custodial services for public works and household hazardous waste. And this recommendation is to accept the proposal from EH Technical Solutions Incorporated at the rates listed, and to establish contract pricing for one year with four one-year options to renew. And our final item is a contract amendment to Contract for Mission Critical Partners LLC for Emergency Communications. And this recommendation is to accept the extension of the contract with Mission Critical Partners LLC through December 31, 2022. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and recommend approval of both items.
Okay. Are there any other questions for Joe on these items? If not, make a motion to approve as presented.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Thank you. Thanks, Joe. Madam Clerk, next item?
Commissioner Dinger.
Yes. Mr. Kaufman?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tim Kaufman, Deputy County Manager, recommend approval of items N through Z.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Well, thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to make a motion that we approve November through Zulu. But I want to point out Sierra and Tango are local funding agreements with both the city of Goddard and the city of May is to help with the funding of the Northwest Bypass. And that partnership is essential in order for us to be able to make sure that the state and the federal government understands that this is a regional project that has many people that will benefit from it. So I just wanted to point out that it is on the consent agenda, but it is important. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I believe you made a motion. I'll second that, for the consented items as presented. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Akeem?
Yeah. Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Akeem Ashford, Communications Director. Just a quick update to the legislative platform. Signed, die was the 23rd of May. It relatively passed without a lot of action. However, the Senate Bill 273, this is one that we've talked about in extensive length, Justin, you know, talked quite a bit about it as well throughout the session. That bill was vetoed, and there was not enough votes to overturn that veto, so it did not pass. And that's the tax reinstatement for businesses in our community. So that was a huge one that we did work really hard on with Jason on that one. So that is the latest update I have. And I'll stand for any questions, if there are any.
Okay. Any questions about legislative issues? I don't see any. Akeem, thanks for the update.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Next item, please.
Committee reports.
Commissioners, do you have any committee reports that you'd like to weigh in on to report to the commission or chair? I don't see any at this time. Next item, please.
Other.
Okay. Anything other that the Commissioners have? Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Chairman. Just an update on my CAB board. The CAB board was supposed to meet this Friday at 3:45 to 5:00 p.m. That's been changed to 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. They meet at 1301, I guess, 1301 Galena Street in southeast Wichita. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Eric. Mr. Chairman, real quickly, since we're mentioning Citizens Advisory Boards, my next Citizens Advisory Board will still be virtual. Hopefully, we can move in person here in the near future. But of interest is that we're going to have Nexera brief us on their proposals for the two large solar farms. So I'm looking forward to finding out more about that project. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Any others? There is a, kind of a late-breaking announcement this afternoon at about 3 o'clock with Air Excel, one of our local companies. It'll be making a nice announcement on employment and cooperation. And so we'll be attending that. And the commission is invited. It kind of came out, got finalized yesterday late afternoon, 3050 North St. Francis is the event at 3 o'clock. Okay. Any others? I don't see any. So we do not have an executive session, and we do not have anything other. So with that, we will stand adjourned.